All right, let's just go to that. Go ahead.
City Council meeting, regular meeting, August 28th, 2017. Call to the order, pledge allegiance. Will you all join me to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
I believe in America and to the republic, for which it stands, and in which it is. Under God, and in heaven, we pray for your freedom and justice.
I forgot to introduce our mayor, our new mayor. I'm gonna be leaving in a couple of minutes. I think I have something else to do. So Luke Poplar is our mayor for a day, and we had him here last week touring the city hall. We went over to the fire department, the police department, and also the corporation yard. So Luke is gonna do the first few things tonight, and as I said, mayor for a day last Monday and mayor for a day today. So anyway, so Luke, let's see, the next one is number three.
Changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any other changes? There are none, all right.
Report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Public comment?
Right down there.
Personal Washington address to the city council on matters not to the posted agenda may do so.
All right, so we have one speaker slip. Is there any other speaker slips? All right, so you can call this gentleman here, Jason Mansfield.
Jason Mansfield?
Okay, how are you, Jason? So we have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and public. I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the board of the chamber, and just wanted to give you a little update. I think you all got the letter from Dave about all the events that we've got going on. In June, we had an event at Devil's Canyon for the, what was it, the building materials and construction industry. So it's like one of the biggest industries in San Carlos. So in collaboration with city staff, we held this event to try and identify, you know, how can we support this industry and move it forward and be a big powerhouse in the Bay Area? And so I think we got a lot of input. We're still working through how to process that and what our next steps are. So that's exciting. We had a great mixer at the museum, so if you haven't been to the museum, you should check it out. But that was a lot of fun. And then upcoming events, we always have our Sunday farmer's market, of course. So hopefully year round, everybody makes it to the Sunday farmer's market. And then September 9th, on September 9th, Saturday, on the east side, near Devil's Canyon and all the wineries, we're gonna have a car show, and I think you got a flyer or a postcard. There might be some out there, yeah. So it should be a really exciting event. The wineries and the breweries are gonna be open. You can walk around, check them out, a bunch of cars, cool old cars and that sort of thing. So definitely an event not to be missed, and hopefully we'll be continuing to have those on an annual basis, depending on how successful it is and how much everybody says, "Yeah, let's do this again." So those are just some of the events, and of course, in October will be the Art and Wine Fair. So we're all looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is?
Approval of consent calendar.
Consent calendar, go ahead, you read this.
Consent calendar items are considered to be routine with enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specifically items to be removed for separate action.
So now what you do is you call for a motion to approve the consent calendar. Go ahead. Say, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Is there a motion to consume, approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, may I pull item L, please?
Okay.
And I would be happy to move approval of the consent calendar absent item L. Oh, second?
Is there a second?
Mr. Collins is second.
And there is an ordinance in the consent calendar tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens. I move we adopt ordinance number 1522, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24, commissions to include the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees.
Are there any discussions on any of the items?
If not, could you have the city clerk call the question?
If not, could you?
City clerk?
The city clerk have, call the question.
Okay. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I think we'll move on to the next item, which is a study session. But Luke, you did a great job. Great job. I'd rather have you stay here and do the rest of it, but anyway, thank you. Keep up your interest in public affairs. All right, and you don't have to stay for anymore if you don't want to. You might want to stay over a little bit. Anyway, thanks for running a good front end of the meeting for us.
You shouldn't encourage him to leave. We may need replacements soon.
That's true, we may need replacements. You're right. You're absolutely right. That's true. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Okay, so item 6, item L, we'll move to the back of the agenda, and we'll move on to item 7, which is a study session. Discuss and provide direction regarding recommended improvements to the pedestrian safety improvement plan for San Carlos Avenue. Grace?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Grace Lee, City Engineer. The San Carlos Avenue Pedestrian Safety Improvement Plan was discussed with the Transportation and Circulation Commission at two different study sessions earlier this year. Both study sessions were very well attended. The input and feedback from the commission and the public were incorporated into the recommended improvements tonight. After tonight's council discussion and input, staff will finalize the plans, and at a future council meeting, bring back the plans for approval. So tonight, to present the plan, we have our consultant, Steve Weinberger from W-Trans here to present. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the council. Steve Weinberger, W-Trans.
How are you, Steve?
Good.
What's the estimated time of this, just ballpark?
Without questions, probably 15 minutes.
Okay, that's fine. We'll have questions, so it'll go longer than that. I'm just curious for how long. Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you an overview. We're presenting the study goals that your staff presented us to us to get started on this. We'll give you a little flavor of the input we got from the community at the previous Transportation and Circulation Commission meetings. Give you an overview of the existing conditions on San Carlos Avenue, and our, the improvement measures that we're recommending. There's some intersections, focus area improvements that we'll cover, and then we'll turn it to you for input. These are a list of the goals that your staff presented with us and our task, focusing on safety connectivity more specifically for pedestrian and bicycle traffic on the corridor, looking at obstacles, right-of-way utility conflicts, for example, but solutions that promote more livable and healthy communities. This is the study area, so on the west side, Beverly, on the very far left, to Prospect on the right, not far from us here, you'll see the stop sign locations. Those are, we're focusing on those intersections that have stop control on the side street with free flow on San Carlos Avenue. There's two traffic signals in our corridor, one at Devonshire, one at Alameda de Las Bogas. And then we have two what are called uncontrolled crosswalks, or crossings of San Carlos where there is no control on the vehicle traffic traveling through them. The one at the access parking lot for Arendelle School, and the other one to the right there at Prospect. During our previous presentations, these were some of the comments we got from the community. Obviously, concerns about speeding on the corridor, safety, specific intersections were mentioned about safety issues. There was a discussion of the access to Arendelle School and Prospect Street, and I'll get into our recommendations, we sort of tie those together. But definitely a sensitivity towards the sidewalk issue and a potential encroachment into what is now sort of landscape gardens that are actually in the public right-of-way on the corridor. So right now in the corridor, traffic volumes are 16,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day from the west to the east here. Speeds in the 32 to 35 mile an hour range, based on the speed surveys we did. These are what are called 85th percentile speeds, 85% of the traffic is traveling at those speeds or less.
Could you go, I'm sorry, could you go back there for a second? What, daily traffic 16, and then daily traffic 17.5? I'm confused. Between sections?
Yeah, actually, at those specific points on the corridor, traffic volumes are, you know, as you go from east to west, drop a bit as traffic goes off to various intersections.
So the one that says 20,000, you're assuming people turn off Cortoleras, or they turn up somewhere up to the right before they get to the next one?
That's if we took just a count on two-way traffic at that point between Cortoleras and Prospect. It's 20,000 vehicles a day. As you go west, that traffic volume is slightly less.
So people are pulling off somewhere?
People are pulling off, right.
Okay, thank you. Just so I understood it, I'm sorry.
All right, all right. We did an evaluation of collision history in the corridor. This is, shows you this colored dots of the whole corridor, given the amount of collisions. And you can see that red 21, the intersection with Alameda, in 10 years has had the most collisions on the corridor with 21. You can see the yellow locations, Cortoleras on the right side of the screen, Devonshire on the left. We're next at eight over 10 years. So we did an evaluation of sort of collision rates at intersections. We also focused on pedestrian and bike collisions. This is, I said?
I think we're just gonna interrupt.
That's okay.
I'm just curious, on the number of collisions, does that compare to any type of, you know, acceptable number? You know, there's that number for like delays at a traffic light, and so they grade the intersection based on that. Is there any kind of national standards or state standards for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are state rates by the type of intersection it is. So we develop rates for these intersections and then compare those with the statewide average for that type of intersection, whether it be a signalized intersection or a stop-controlled intersection. I don't have those right in front of me, but I, in a few minutes, I will.
Okay.
Okay. So pet collisions, there was, in the study area, four pedestrian collisions over the last 10 years. One just off the corridor there at the Alameda Carmelita intersection. So we definitely, in terms of the pet and bike collisions, we looked at actually more specific details on those, where they occurred, which direction of the vehicle traffic was going, to make sure those were addressed in our recommendations. These are the bike collisions over 10 years. Again, there was about five, as you see in the corridor, and this was their locations. So we did a warrant analysis to look and see, was a traffic signal warranted at any of these intersections that are currently uncontrolled? There's a device called a Hawk or a Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon, which is essentially a traffic signal that is off until somebody wants to cross the street, then it goes into a flashing red. That's the pedestrian hybrid beacon. There are warrants for that, and we evaluated those. And then enhanced treatments, flashing yellow lights, things like that. So you'll see that the signal, traffic signal is currently warranted at the Phelps intersection, which is adjacent to the Arendelle School parking lot, and I'll have a visual to show you that location, what our recommendations are. The Hawk or Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon device, the warrants are met at the Arendelle School crosswalk, which does have the flashing lights right now. And then the Prospect location, the highest, as you go to these from bottom to top, obviously provide more protection for the pedestrian. The Prospect location only met warrants for other enhancements, whether that be medians or flashing lights. So we have recommendations there as well. So a big part of our effort was to look at sort of sidewalk facilities in the corridor, because there are a lot of gaps on this section from Beverly to Prospect. There is right now about 2,250, 2,250 feet of existing sidewalk in the corridor, and we are proposing to leave those sidewalk sections as they are. But there is other sections without raised concrete sidewalks. There's about 2,600 feet of an asphalt AC path with the asphalt berm, as you see here. It's mostly on the south side of that corridor, connecting the sidewalk sections. So there is a, it does create sort of a continuous pedestrian walkway, but it is not sort of the full curb gutter sidewalk standard that the city has. There is also 30 locations where there are trees in the place where there could be a sidewalk along this, along the corridor. There's also, we have, there's some utilities such as fire hydrants to deal with if you're putting in new sidewalk sections, like you see in the top right. If sidewalks were to be installed where they're currently not existing, about 32 parking spaces along the corridor would be lost. Because as you see here, just beyond the fire hydrant, those parking spaces would go away in lieu of curb gutter sidewalk. There is about 1,250 feet of right-of-way where, that is essentially, the public right-of-way is just shoulder, as you've seen here, and there's room for a sidewalk to be constructed. And we split these out separately, because the cost would be different if you're installing a sidewalk, say, on that AC path area, or installing it in a location like this, where there's just the asphalt, you have some drainage issues to deal with. And because there's also a third category, where there is neighbors, either driveways, retaining walls, or landscaping that have been constructed in the public right-of-way of the street, such as here, that if you were to install a sidewalk in the public right-of-way, some of these areas would need to be addressed. New retaining walls built, for example, and the cost of those would be higher than the other sidewalks. So we basically dissected all the sidewalk facilities, where there was missing, what type of facility it is now. So we'll be showing you some cost estimates of what it would take to put full curb gutter sidewalk on the entire corridor where it currently doesn't exist. Okay, so moving on, let's move on to the recommendations for the corridor. I'm gonna split this up into three segments. First, from Beverly to Devonshire, then Devonshire to Alameda, then Alameda to Prospect, as shown here. Okay, so the, we are recommending that new sidewalk Okay, so the, the recommend, we are recommending that new sidewalk facilities be considered on these three segments where they're currently missing. So you can have a complete sidewalk system along San Carlos Avenue. That includes adding striped crosswalks and the accessible ADA standard curb ramps at all the side street crossings of those intersections. There will be, need to be some utilities relocated, and we've included that in the cost estimate. There's also some transit stops that would need to be redesigned with the sidewalks.
And your recommendation is for one side or both sides?
We are presenting a plan for both sides.
Both sides, okay.
Yeah, and that may be a topic of conversation, questions for you as we get to the cost estimates. Okay, segment one, so from Beverly to Devonshire, would need about 1,250 feet of newly constructed sidewalk. You can see there's a curb ramps, or there's some utilities, trees to be removed, parking spaces to be lost. Every segment, obviously, has sort of a similar inventory. I won't go through all the numbers, but we inventoried each segment where all the trees are, the 30 trees that would need to be removed, and where the parking spaces would be lost. The, when we are done with this plan, we present you and the staff with what's called a 30% design plan, the geometric plan for the corridor that shows where the sidewalks are, and that would be taken into further design after that. But I wanted to mention, there is the existing asphalt path on the south side of San Carlos in segment one that does provide a continuous walkway now for pedestrians on the south side of the street only. There's discontinuous sections on the north side. Okay, segment two, so from Devonshire to Alameda, thank you. There's about 2,200 feet of new sidewalk needed, and there's the inventory of the utilities and trees and such. Again, same thing here, where there is some AC path on the south side, that does provide continuous walkway on the south side, but the north side is where there's the missing pedestrian sections now that would need new sidewalk to provide for pedestrians on the north side. And finally, segment three, 2,000 feet of new sidewalk, the trees, utilities, parking spaces lost. And again, that AC path, which I said is mostly on the south side, does provide a continuous pedestrian facility on the south side, not a full raised sidewalk, but does provide that AC with the berm protection. So we are also recommending speed reduction markings. This is a generic location, but just to show you, there's a new markings that are, is in the manual that we can use, and its intention is to provide some optical changes to the driver that makes them feel like they're driving faster than they are, just to help with speed control on the corridor. The intersection focus areas, I mentioned a little bit about the Arendelle School parking lot, which you see here on the left, and then there's the Phelps intersection. So the Phelps intersection, which does not have a traffic signal now, does warrant one, and you do have the crosswalk, as you see on the left, to the school parking lot, which does warrant a red flashing Hawk beacon. So what we are suggesting, and there's the existing crosswalk, which does have the flashing lights, it's a flashing warning light system. The warrants, because of the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic, and the number of school children crossing here, does meet warrants for something, a higher facility in terms of protection for pedestrians, and that's the flashing red, which is a stop control as opposed to the flashing yellow that's there now, which is a warning device. You have long backups along this corridor and traffic on Phelps. So what we are recommending here is to install the traffic signal at Phelps, move the crosswalk from the mid-block location to the intersection, and then provide sidewalk along that frontage, that northern frontage, so the children walking to school will have that traffic signal with the walk phase to cross, then walk, and then they would not cross any of the parking lot access, they would go right onto the path that takes them around the parking lot and to the path up to the school. The parking lot can still be used for pickup and drop-off. Traffic can still enter and exit as it does now to pick up and drop off children. So these two locations, even though they each recommend something in terms of a stop-control situation, are too close to provide both those devices at this close a distance. So we've recommended the one location at Phelps to do both those things. Alameda, which is essentially a, geometrically is an awkward intersection. Pedestrians, as you know, on either end, sort of crossing Alameda, have sort of two, the first and last crossings, those short segments, where there is no control for vehicles. Those are free right turn areas that the pedestrian has to contend with. So what we, and there's a view of that. Here's the free right turn turning right onto San Carlos, that the pedestrian essentially is, it's a crossing situation where the pedestrian has to be aware, and the driver has to be aware of the situation there. And here's the free right turn onto Alameda from San Carlos. So what we are recommending is essentially to square the intersection up, eliminate those free right turns, and provide a more standard crosswalk situation that would be fully controlled with the walk signals, and essentially eliminating those two islands. And we've looked at operations of the intersection, can still make it operate acceptably. We're essentially using the same number of lanes, but eliminating that sort of free right turn lane against the pedestrian crosswalk. The other location is Cortoleras. There was comments from neighbors at the first TNC meeting and about the, essentially the wide curvature here and the speed of traffic coming off Cortoleras, and the reverse movement, turning on, for kind of high speed, given the angle of this. So, again, a little bit of redesign, just to try to more create a more perpendicular intersection to slow those movements up, that right turn out of Cortoleras and the left turn on, to help with the pedestrian safety situation. And then finally, Prospect, which, right now, is a difficult crossing. You see the crosswalk, which is on the east, the west side of Prospect. And what we are recommending here, and you'll see, we're also in a location where we're going from the two lanes to the west to four on the east. So drivers are generally speeding up on the merge, right where you don't want them to, right at the crosswalk location. So what we are suggesting is this, adding raised bulbous on either side, or raised median, so we have a crossing situation that is much more favorable to the pedestrian, crossing one direction at a time with a median in the middle. What this also does, it requires traffic coming out of Prospect into a right turn-in, right turnout only. It's intended to prohibit those left turns because, and the reason we chose that as opposed to the lower half of Prospect is that location has no other outlet. The traffic on the southern half offset Prospect has no other outlet. So they would have full movements that they do now, lefts in, lefts out. Traffic on Prospect that can no longer make a left turn onto San Carlos does have other options of north, to the north, of going, coming down some other streets to the east of here. So it does clean up the intersection in terms of safety and pedestrian crossing conditions. Okay, in terms of the cost, so all those things I just presented you with, the sidewalk costs, and that's to put sidewalks everywhere where there is currently not a raised concrete sidewalk. That includes the asphalt path areas. So there would be raised concrete sidewalks on both sides of the street, continuous for those three segments, and you can see the cost for each segment, each, one to $2 million each for those segment costs. Some of the sidewalks are higher cost than others because of the conditions where you have residents that have built retaining walls or gardens into the public right-of-way. So the cost is included to essentially take that area back, put up a new retaining wall, so people's gardens and such are outside the public right-of-way on their own property. And then the intersection improvements, which I just went through, is costed out separately of that $1.3 million. So, questions?
Great, thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of questions, some of them are for staff and some of them are for you, sir. So I'll just go through them. Let me start with one that I've always wondered about for years, which is, you've talked a lot about installing raised sidewalks, I think of as traditional sidewalks. What, what's the safety benefit of those? I mean, is there empirical data that indicates how the degree of safety they provide for
I don't have any studies at the tip of my fingers to show you. I think from a realistic standpoint, a, you know, a standard curb gutter sidewalk situation is the standard because it does provide the most separation and elevation difference between a driver. A car veers, veers into a sidewalk, hopefully at a, given a lower speed, will not mount the sidewalk, and the curb helps keep that traffic off. So next, the AC path situation, which is more used in rural situations, because it's more in keeping with sort of rural look, and, but in the, that AC berm does provide sort of a similar effect, but not as, I think, as elevated as a raised sidewalk. And then, of course, shoulder locations don't provide any protection for the pedestrian. So I think the intention was, was to recommend and show you what it would cost to provide the raised sidewalks, the standard force pedestrian facilities in the city. And you do have the AC paths, and I know that's probably a topic of conversation, because the AC paths, although-
You know, that's, that's in the interest of time.
Okay.
That's okay. Let me just, let me just leave it as, I'll leave it as a request for information with staff, that I would like to get some sense of what the empirical information is there. Next couple of questions, I think, actually are for staff. First one, scope of this study. As I recall, when we authorized this expenditure, it was also to include at least the Holly Street corridor and potentially other areas of the city as well. So I'd just like to know how those are factoring in here.
Correct. San Carlos Avenue is just one corridor out of the program. We started with this one first. We went to two TNC already. The Holly is next. We actually went to one TNC meeting with the Holly. We're going to revisit back with TNC first before coming to council with the Holly, and that's coming up next.
Okay, good. Thank you, I appreciate that. I know there's a lot of people who, in some of the other areas, who are interested in seeing this work out. Several times during the presentation, comments were made to the effect of various things that were built over the years in the public right-of-way. And I guess this is actually a question in part for you, Grace, and probably in part for Greg Rubens, is, I guess, were those authorized? And if they're not authorized, then what rights do the property own? I mean, could we show, I'm not saying we should, could we show up and say, hey, by the way, your retaining walls in the public right-of-way, move it and enjoy paying the bill yourself, because we're not paying for it, because it shouldn't have been there in the first place?
I think I'll try and answer that question. The, these would be considered encroachments in the right-of-way. I don't believe that any of them, maybe some where people obtained permits, but typically they're not with permit improvements that people do in landscaping. Historically, I think largely it's been that way for over 50 years, the way the driveways are configured and where the way people access their home, because you can see that the driveways are actually encroaching in many cases. So they don't have any right to keep that, those improvements in the right-of-way. People installed those at their own risk. As far as the cost share of removing them, I'm not sure that in our code we have the ability, but I'll look into that. We might have the ability to allocate some of that cost if the council decided to do that. But basically, they're not allowed, and public, the public generally does not have any kind of prescriptive or other rights to continue to use that portion of the right-of-way.
And perhaps a question, then, the cost estimates we saw, the implication I took away is they included reconstructing retaining walls and whatnot. So, so there is a presumption that the city, the way the numbers are put together, there's a presumption the city is paying for moving the retaining wall, whether or not we are required to do that or not.
At this point, the direction to the consultant was to have a cost estimate of the whole package, whether that would be the property owner's cost or the city's cost, that's still to be debated, but we just wanted to wrap our hands around what the cost would be.
Okay. Next question, which is, may actually be a Jeff question. From a process point of view, this is a great study. I think there's, there's a lot, I have some questions about parts of it, obviously, but but in general, I think it makes a good case for, for the recommendations. But part of what strikes me as interesting is this was triggered by, of course, a very unfortunate event that happened where a fatality occurred on San Carlos Avenue. And yet, when I look at like the warrant evaluations where it says Phelps Road is warranted now for a stoplight, and the pedestrian hybrid beacon is warranted at the Arendelle Crosswalk, I specifically remember having conversations personally with various people and city staff since I joined the council about could we do something like that there? And I guess what I'm wondering is, do we have a process for keeping track of as traffic gets more dense around town, to say, oh, we should put a stoplight in there? Or do, I mean, I hate to say this, do we wait for something terrible to happen and then go study it and go, yeah, we're allowed to have a stoplight there? It just seems, you see what I'm saying, it's a process, Grace, it seems odd, and I'd like some input from staff about, is this the best way to do stuff?
Right, we've been working on a neighborhood traffic calming management plan with the TNC Commission, and that's a venue where the public, if they see any traffic or transportation issues, or they can go through that process. We ourselves also do speed studies that includes volumes, so we're required to at certain locations do that type of study, and that's to keep our federal funding, I think that's every 10 years at least, I believe. So that's something we look at too, at different intersections for speed and for vehicle speed.
Okay. In this, I'm glad to hear that. What's interesting to me about this is, you know, if I had to pick one road in town other than El Camino, which is a state highway, which is like the main street in San Carlos, it's San Carlos Avenue, meaning it has the name of the town in it. And so it's sort of odd to see that we study it and find that various traffic safety improvement things are warranted, and it's like, well, how come we didn't know that already? I'm not, that is a criticism, I'm not criticizing individuals, I'm just saying, I want to make sure our process is actually staying ahead of this stuff, so we don't have to wait for terrible things to happen. Last two things are not questions, they're just observations that I'd like to come back and discuss when we get to the discussion phase. One is, if we put sidewalks in here, what do we tell the folks on Cortoleras who came in a few years ago and wanted sidewalks, and we said, fine, if you want to put them in for yourself, like everybody else pays for sidewalks around town, go for it? And if there really is safety associated with it, then do we need to have a discussion about policy, there's some class of streets that has enough traffic where we say it has to have a sidewalk? And then, secondly, a number of the changes that are proposed here are going to have, I think they add a lot of safety to the community, but they're also going to have some negative impacts on people, like losing parking spaces and all sorts of other stuff. How much community outreach have we done on this? My sense is that there's been some, but probably most people, I know this isn't an action item, but if we took action item on it, they'd be surprised that we were taking away their parking spaces. So that's something else I think we need to factor into the plan going forward, is to make sure that we're, we give people a chance- to make sure that we give people a chance to kick the tires and understand why we're doing this if we decide to do something. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the presentation. It was very clear, and I like the way that you've chunked this up into, you know, meaningful bite-sized projects. And I'm really, overall, just pleased with the process that we got to a place with some really actionable ideas. My question is, you know, you presented essentially four separate individual projects. If you had to prioritize which of the four you think would have the biggest impact on public safety, which would you choose?
If you recall, I was talking about that AC path on the south side, provides that and the sidewalks that are there provide a continuous pedestrian facility on the south side of the street on all three segments. So, if you were to parcel this out, I mean, the intersection improvements do have a effect and provide enhanced crossing facilities and take care of, as you looked at those accident diagram we showed, which are all generally focused at the intersections, the intersection improvements do address the majority of the past intersection history on the corridor. So, in terms of if that is your focus of reducing collisions on the corridor, you want to focus your work at the intersections, then I would say the intersection improvements rises to the top. After that, sidewalk facilities, their importance, the middle segment two has, I think, the most benefit because it provides the pet access, provide pet access on both sides closest to the school. And in fact, if you recall the image I showed of Phelps with the signal, it included sidewalks to get those crossing at Phelps over to the path that goes around the parking lot. So, I would say that would be, you know, in terms of the biggest bang for your buck would be the intersection improvements. Next, I think, would be the sidewalk improvements on the middle segment two because of the school.
That's great, and I actually had exactly the same instincts. One question I just wanted to stress test with you is, you know, my natural instincts are to think, hey, let's maximize the safety improvements around the school with the idea that, you know, you have tons of pedestrians going to and from the school, at the same time during morning rush hour, you have lots of cars around. The case with, you know, the really tragic incident last year where, you know, somebody was struck at night was a case of, you know, very low visibility when the driver didn't anticipate or may not have anticipated that there would be anyone else walking out on the road and didn't see them. Do you have a sense of, you know, is it better to maximize when you have the maximum congestion of both pedestrians and cars? Or do you want to, in the case of this one incident, and it may have been just an outlier, but kind of create enough separation in cases where, you know, it's dark and, you know, other things like that? I don't know what your reaction is to that general comment.
I start thinking about lighting, and I'm going to look to my colleague if lighting costs were included.
They are included. The street scale lighting is included.
Yeah, so we have included not just the cost for sidewalks, but the cost for lighting at all these intersections as well. So, the lighting issue, I mean, you want me to comment on the addressing where that collision was?
You know, through the chair, I'm looking at our city attorney, and I think we already talked, I don't think we should talk about any accidents or any situations. I was really uncomfortable where you went there, and I'm looking, and he's right at the mic, and I'm right with him. We're not talking about any accidents or any light or any of that stuff tonight. We don't know what happened, at least I don't, and maybe other people do, but I don't, so.
That's good advice. So, I have one final question then, and maybe it's a question for Grace, or maybe it's a question for you, it's sort of building on something that Mark said about, you know, anticipating that if we were to put in sidewalks, you know, some people's property, or at least what they perceive to be their property, would be impacted in terms of retaining walls. And did any comments come up like that at the TNC? What was, could you share any anecdotes, either positively or negatively, from people who, whose property would be directly impacted by putting a sidewalk in?
For the TNC, we had about 20, 10 to 20 speakers, and a lot of them were saying that they, they're happy to see sidewalks going in, they do understand that they'll lose parking or their retaining wall or landscaping. Some are worried, they have really beautiful retaining walls, and they're worried about losing it, but they're still, it still sounds like they're supportive of the project, and that's from people who did speak at the TNC.
So, did you have any residents who were adamantly opposed, saying, you know, over my dead body, I'm not going to give up my wall? No?
No, I didn't hear that, no.
All right, thank you.
That might happen when construction crews are at the site, but right now, for discussion, we haven't heard.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Weinberger, nice to see you again.
See you.
Just a couple of questions. I was a little surprised, although I'm not, I can't say that I think it's a bad idea to put a traffic signal in at Phelps, but it seems awfully close to Alameda. And I'm just wondering, I know it's warranted, but what are the standards for how close together electric signals can be? And what are the potential issues of, you know, traffic backup in the morning and the evening? I'm thinking particularly in the morning because you have a lot of traffic coming down St. Carlos Avenue.
Right, well, I think that there is enough separation between Phelps and Alameda that, and you asked for a specific distance, there is a gray area for sure. I mean, generally, you want to be about 1,000 feet away, but you do see situations where you do have closer than that. The situation here was, it did meet signal warrants, and it wasn't a borderline situation either. The congestion on the side street is heavy enough where it does, it's a pretty solid warrant for a signal. So, I think the situation was, it meets signals, we were showing the situation, if you did put one in, here's what you would have to do with it with this other crosswalk, which also required enhancements. But I don't think what you would want to do would be spend money on, say, enhancements to the crosswalk that exists now at the parking lot location, and then come back a few years later and put in the signal and then have to take that out. So, I think that was our approach, to look a little forward, that at some point, I think the traffic is likely to, you know, that signal may make it on to your CIP and go in. This is what, in our recommendation, it should look like, so those two locations are not so close, the crosswalk with a hawk, and this could not, are too close to work together.
Would the lights be timed to work together?
It's possible, yeah, that the Devonshire and Phelps and Alameda could be timed to provide some continuity of traffic, whether you, there are, of course, hardware that you can use to interconnect them, that would be another cost, but there are, I think, given the situation they're in, you can also use sort of a time-based plan where there is some continuity between those three signals.
Okay, and then, I think you answered the question, I think Cameron asked you about, if you could only do one thing, you said, start with the intersections. So, that one was answered. The other thought I had many, many years ago, I'm old enough to remember, there were these six-by-six white painted posts on the south side of St. Carlos Avenue between Cordilleras and Alameda, and it provided a physical separation. Now, in those days, it was rather primitive, it was just cable strung through those, through those posts. I'm wondering if a more modern version of that, like concrete ballers or something like that, I didn't see it mentioned. Was it considered, or was it maybe not considered because there haven't really been any pedestrian accidents along that way? I'm just wondering about a physical separation for, you know, pedestrians and potentially bikes on that side.
Yeah, we actually haven't gotten to that discussion with your staff on this. What you're describing, though, in terms of some type of raised baller, there is a device that's used, it's a lot, a lot of times now, it's used where you have a bike lane, maybe a heavy-use bike lane with higher-speed traffic, where you might have some striped buffer area. It's a flexible post that are adhesive to the pavement and are essentially 3, 3 and a half feet high. In terms of visual, you know, they look very urban and a lot of people, you know, not fond of how they look visually, the aesthetics, aesthetics. So, but we haven't gotten any discussions, you're the first one that has brought this up.
Okay.
So, I think we'll take it under advisement.
I'm glad to be the first.
Okay.
And then a couple more. These actually came from a resident who sent us an email. He was asking about the prospect intersection there, and you had, you know, that median that strip there built in. He wanted to know, was that just painted on, or is that actually a raised median there on?
There we go.
There you go. Yeah, that was, looks like yellow or brown on mine.
The sort of tan brownish areas are intended to be raised concrete islands, providing, the green areas you see is, would actually be a cutout for the bike lane to travel through that, but which the pedestrian would cross. So, the pedestrian would have this protection of the raised island to get near the edge of the traffic and the center area. So, it's, and the center one, being the key one, is a raised island, which would physically prevent and would be signed, no left turns onto Prospect, no left turns out. We actually, this would look a little different last time we came to the TNC, that short little left turn pocket you see in the middle, we had that whole area as one just rectangular island, and those living on the south side said, hey, this is our only way in and out, how do I turn left and onto my street? So, we were able to carve out some area of left turn, you know, the little, the center line probably do be a thin raised area to really prevent those left turns in and out of northern Prospect, but those are intended to be raised islands.
Okay. And any thought as to what sort of traffic impact that would have in terms of people coming down Prospect? You know, they'd have to find another way, I guess, they'd go down to Cedar.
Yeah, there's two other options that they can take, doubling back up slightly a few hundred feet and then coming down, there's two other options. In terms of the volume of traffic, I mean, we have the numbers here, I can look and see essentially how many left turns an hour, and as I'm talking, Nick's taking a look, that make that left turn that would need to divert to the other streets.
It could be that they don't because it's already pretty dangerous to take a left-hand turn.
It's, yeah, they do have the benefit now of the center to a left turn lane to turn left into, but again, it's right in the middle where you have the, you know, the change from the two lanes to the four-lane situation, which always gets very tricky because folks are more focused on merging than they are at paying attention to cross-street traffic.
All right, and I promise, my last question's, again, from the email writer, wanted to know if the bike lane markings would be preserved up and down St. Carlos Avenue.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mention that. All the recommendations we went through and the design examples we went through are intended to maintain the existing bike lane striping that's there.
Thank you.
Mr. Grocott? So, some of my questions are probably going to sound like repeats or follow-ups on some of the things Ron just asked, but I just want to make sure, I want to start with Alameda And so, my first question has to do with, currently, there is an island that at least, well, there's a couple of them actually, that for a pedestrian, it gives you respite as you're crossing over that intersection, and your proposal shows no island whatsoever. And I'm wondering, is there the room in the right-of-way, is it recommended, I mean, is it advised that for some reason we don't have a, some type of island there in the middle? And I'm talking about on the Alameda part of it, where it meets St. Carlos Avenue. Currently, there's two spots where people could find safety and refuge if they needed.
Right. So, what we're trying to do with the design is, if you're, say, a pedestrian on the far left here, crossing, you're, that first crossing movement to the smaller triangular island, you don't have any traffic walk signal, you were just, you were on your own as a pedestrian with that right turn onto Alameda as a free-flow movement. Okay? And then, once you get to the larger island, and then you cross with your walk signal to the larger island, and now, as you cross from the larger island to the far-right side, again, you have no walk signal, you're crossing on your own with a free right turn, traffic, you know, free-flowing onto St. Carlos Avenue. So, the intention was, was to force those two right turn movements into a more perpendicular turn, the sort of more standard intersection where a right turn on, you can turn right turn on red, and pedestrian situation, there's more visibility. The current situation is a little convoluted and geometrically, as you can see, is a little disjointed, and a pedestrian path is kind of zigzaggy through here, but it's to create sort of a more, I think, situation that is more standard and creates slower, I think, most importantly, slow-moving right turn movements than they are now.
So, but I still come back to my question, is there room to put in, despite what you've shown here, is there room to put in some type of median or island in between the, I guess those are north and southbound lanes on the Alameda?
So, in the center of the Alameda leg of the intersection?
Yeah.
I would say yes, there is right-of-way, because if you look at the green areas, the sort of reclaimed existing pavement.
Correct.
So, if you, maybe we think about spreading that out a little bit, there is right-of-way to do that.
Right, and I think that's something that should be looked at as a possibility. I think of like, I know what you're saying, and I appreciate and agree with making it more of a perpendicular situation for the intersection, but I think of it a little bit like where St. Carlos Avenue meets El Camino, and we have actually a monument, you know, San Carlos City, San Carlos Monument. So, it's not that wide of an island, but it is an island nonetheless, and if you're crossing and you mistime it, or for whatever reason, you need a place to find refuge, you can do it, and it might be advisable here. So, that's the only reason I would think we might want to look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. The next intersection is Cordilleras Avenue, and I just want to understand the difference. Are we also there proposing to make that more of a 90-degree intersection? Is that what you're showing there?
Yeah.
Because right now, it's kind of a sweeping thing, and it's, you know.
It is, and that's what we're trying to eliminate in this, and so, there's, and we're showing a lot, but we're also, what we're trying to do is show, is showing all the sidewalks that would be added on the north side. But I think what is most related to this is that Cordilleras leg, as you look here, has a angled approach, almost directing them on that right turn movement, where what we're trying to do is bring them to a perpendicular as much as possible so those right turns have to stop, and then are making that more perpendicular turn rather than the tangent movement onto St. Carlos.
The thing that's concerns me also about this intersection, and I'm not sure it's been solved here, is when you do travel by bike along there, I know whenever I do it, you have two things to contend with. One is all the little seeds from the eucalyptus trees are terrible because they can throw you off your bike if you hit them wrong, and the way vehicles are coming in there, you know, you're advised, if you're on a bike, and you can be easily doing 25 miles an hour along that corridor on a bicycle if you're an avid cyclist, but it's hardly recommended because you don't have the stopping power. So, you approach that intersection, and it's always a question whether a car is going to just- to just sort of do a yield movement through that intersection. And the trouble is, people in cars, even with this design, tend to nose out to see if they can go. And when they're nosing out, they're in your way if you're on a bike. And so.
To address that, I mean, one more thing we can add to this is the bike lane, so that eastbound bike lane on the south side is, adds some, the striped green paint.
Correct, yeah.
To show the path of the cyclists, and that would give some guidance to those pulling out, like, all right, now you're getting into the path of the cyclists.
Yeah.
Look for a cyclist.
Okay.
So that can, that can certainly be, oh, that's a great idea.
Okay. And then the other intersection I had here was, I guess, Prospect. And it was somewhat addressed by what you answered to Mr. Collins. And actually, all along this corridor, you've said that the intent is to maintain the bike lanes where they are. I'm not even sure they are, if we go back to Alameda, is there currently on the south side of Alameda, isn't there a bike lane now? Yes, there is. And it, and so if you're coming down there, what you're showing in the design, it doesn't look like it's there at all. See, it's gone.
Yeah, actually, it's kind of, well, in my view, it's, we've moved it to the other side of the right turn, which is the more standard.
Right.
With the right turn lane. You actually don't see what would likely happen is you have the green paint to cross over to get it on the other side of the right turn lane.
Yeah, so another place for maybe some green paint would be advisable.
Yeah, so here it's, it is already on the left side of the right turn lane.
And as you go, so the one at Prospect, I just have a comment. Again, this is just, you know, me as a cyclist. And I know they tried to do this in Menlo Park years ago as an experiment, and it got torn out because the bicyclist just stormed City Hall. When you create these situations where a bike is supposed to go and it's raised on either side, it's actually dangerous for a bike because it gives, it gives no way out once you're in there. If something happens, a pedestrian gets in your way or something, you can't swerve into traffic, into the traffic lane to avoid the pedestrian, because if you do, you're going to hit a curb and get thrown off your bike and end up in the traffic yourself as a body without a bike. So those aren't really advisable situations for most avid cyclists. It, it's good to have the bike lane continue through there, but that little raised piece of tan area that you have on the left side of the cyclist?
I understand.
Yeah.
No, I understand what you're saying. We will, again, that's the first time that's come up, but I appreciate the comment.
Sure.
And we'll take another, you know, it's, it's an evolving design, so.
I understand, yeah. I, I'm in design work myself, and I know how that goes. And then the last question I had has to do more with the, the way you've segmented the cost, which I appreciate. And by the, the other council members have said too, excellent presentation. And I want to throw my kudos in there as well. But you mentioned, when Cameron asked about priorities, you said, south side, all three sections. So could, is there a way that we could?
No.
Provide that as a cost, you know, chunk as well?
What I said was, the south side of all three sections do currently have the AC path and sidewalks that if, which does, is some level of pedestrian walkway facility. So you could, you know, I suggested the intersection improvements as the highest priority. And then Segment Two as sort of the next priority because it's near the school, and you can even break it down further up the north side of Segment Two, which is on the school side, get a continuous sidewalk there. So.
So could we, could we look at it as, you've sliced and diced it, you know, like cutting a snake in three pieces. Could we full A it down the center?
We could, we can, yeah. I absolutely break these costs into six pieces.
I got to chuckle out of that, by the way, I guess.
Yeah, no, absolutely break this into six. We have all the costs for each side, you know, so no problem doing that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Mark, I see you're on, but I'm going to, I could ask a couple of questions before I call on you.
But you won't?
Just wanted to be polite. At least, at least at 8:07, I'll be polite, but anyway. When you did the, you know, again, I, I'm certainly not an engineer, and I even hit myself to ask this question, but you said there's, you know, at Phelps, there's a warranted signal. And again, I had the same question Ron had. It seems like it's really close to the other one. It just seems like I could, I mean, it's like a thousand, I don't, maybe it is a thousand feet, I don't know. I assume a lot of that, when you do these things, you go through the whole day looking at the traffic. Okay? Because I would think that a lot of stuff at 8:30 in the morning or 3 o'clock in the afternoon, a lot of cars be coming down from Phelps from a Rundle, maybe, or something. But I, or people coming to work. But during the day, I mean, Alameda, to me, has like a million more times cars than Phelps does. And that's why I was just, but I guess, and there was enough traffic on Phelps that you felt that there needed to be, I mean, it was warranted?
Well, the, the, the volume counts we've taken were during the peak hours. So we do, especially in the morning, we have the school, school traffic.
Right, it's the school traffic, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's why the signal's at Alameda now. It has, yeah.
All right. That's good. I just, I just, you know, it just seemed like it could disappear for four or five hours during the day and late at night. The other question I had is, if we could go to the, again, the old Prospect, that one. What about folks, you don't anticipate, and again, I think of the wildest things. Folks are coming south on Prospect, okay? And they get to the intersection. They can't take a left now because of this. So they're going to do a little whoopsie doo into this little left-hand turn lane and do a U-turn. I'm just, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if there's, if that's even logical. I might try it, you know, if there's no sign. And I, I don't know if that even comes into the mix. The odds are just really slim that anybody would do that, that just take a right and go somewhere else and make a, make another turn.
You know, I, I think probably originally, that's why I've kind of sketched it out with the full island, and then we had the folks that live there want the access. So we, we actually haven't done any sort of vehicle turning radii sort of, you know, yet. That U-turn movement now, I'm, I'm curious to see whether, whether we would prohibit U-turns or not, and what size vehicles could make U-turns there, because we've also limited with the, the bulb out on the south side, the room that they have. So my guess is likely being a no U-turn situation.
Okay. Well, again, I, I don't think we should rearrange because of my great idea, but I'm just thinking that's something that sometimes we do stuff and then you go, oh, wow, it's starting, we have a plan B, you know, if we needed to, to try to stop it.
We certainly have no U-turn on Laurel and people.
Oh, geez, don't get me started on that. Can I be deputized to like give tickets out on that? Go ahead. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One is, when the question came up, I think Ron asked before about the spacing with the Phelps light, I pull up Google Maps and just estimated how long, how big the gap was between like Cedar and Chestnut and Chestnut and Elm. It's about 450 feet. So now that's traditionally more the downtown area, but still, the lights are fairly close together. The one thing I wanted to mention, I thought, was thinking about Matt's comment about potentially putting an island in for pedestrians to pause on, on Alameda, got the Alameda intersection. I'm certainly not opposed to that, but I would just ask staff and the experts to think carefully about, to the extent to which that actually provides safety, because I've actually seen recently some correspondence on various social, local social media sites about drivers being angry about, well, the person should have stopped at the, you know, they should have waited at the intermediate place rather than continue moving. And I almost wonder whether or not it's, it's, you know, might actually be safer not to have to stop there, because then drivers are like, hey, somebody's in the intersection, I have to stop. So just something to consider. Certainly, you know, three lanes of traffic, three and a half lanes of traffic, that's no wider to cross than St. Carlos Avenue down at Chestnut or Cedar or Elm. So.
If I can just comment, the, and I know you brought this up, and I, we're going to look at it. The, the issue here with putting that island is, if you're at a traffic signal and you put an island, you're intualling that people can stop there and wait for the next cycle, which now means you need to also put a push-button equipment there so they get a walk signal the next time around, because it's not going to be an automatic walk signal. So there's a lot of considerations that. It is, I think, a, even without an island, a better situation for the pedestrian. It's simplified the intersection the way it is now.
No question. I'm just, and I'm not opposing it, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure you guys think about the entirety of it.
Thoss that around.
Mr. Grocott, one more?
Yeah, just one more that I'd forgotten. Ron had asked about protection between pedestrian and roadway. And I just simply wanted to ask, are K-railings used anymore for protection like that?
Race to see if you use that.
A K railing? Oh, it's, it's what you see on the freeway all the time.
That's the concrete A-frame looking like structure that's mostly used on freeways and mostly used for temporary situations, like right here at Wheeler, we use the Waterfield ones.
I may be using the wrong term then. I'm thinking of the, you know, it's a metal guardrail.
Oh, guardrail. So something like Prospect has that guardrail?
Yeah, yeah.
So we haven't really considered those. Aesthetically, they're not traditional and not, I mean, even when we put the delineators on St. Francis, we had a lot of feedback on the way it looks. People are confused on what it is and how, how to deal with it. So we didn't quite get to that. I think a sidewalk, a raised sidewalk is a more traditional, people know how to react to that more.
Okay. This is not a public hearing, but is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? So gentlemen, what do you want to do?
Well, it's not an action item.
No, but we want to give direction, right?
I mean, yeah, we'd like to have staff work with Mr. Weinberger some more. I'd like to hear more about the things we asked about.
Okay.
Oh, what's the timetable on that, Jeff?
So will, staff will take council's input and feedback, go back to, and look at the final plan. Just like Steve had said, the production would be up to a 30% design plan. So we have a better understanding on the impacts, on what the cost would be from our discussion, the different slicing and dicing. And we'll come back with our recommendation for what the plan should be for design.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, comments?
I was just going to say, given, you know, Mark's earlier comment around, we appropriated money for pedestrian safety at a number of different places. The, so the, the design work is under the existing contract, is that what you're saying?
Up to 30% is under.
I see, so. But when we actually sort of discuss moving forward and authorizing, you know, actual construction, is it your plan and understanding right now that we would look at, you know, St. Carlos Avenue as, as well as Holly and think about how that fits into the current budget? Rather than seeing this as sort of a discreet project?
Yeah, I think ultimately that's our goal, is to have this work far enough along by the time the council's making decisions for next year's budget, that you could make prioritized decisions, because it's unlikely within, you know, given the scale of what we're looking at with just this section, that you'd be able to tackle it in any given two-year budget. So you could get to what the council was talking about earlier and prioritize different sections, not just on St. Carlos Avenue, but throughout the city.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay. Mr. Grocott?
So I would like staff to target a date for us on when they would come back. And number two, I would think it might be advisable to consider how the county, what is it, BPAC, I think they still call it that, how they make awards. One of the things that worked really well for Half Moon Bay was to take the trail that they have along Highway One and break it into segments and go to BPAC with grant requests that were, that wouldn't eat up all the money they got each year. And so if we could study that a little bit and then bring it back segmented the way you, you had it, but looking at that as a possibility of, you know, we can do this segment, we can go to BPAC for some grant funding and probably get it because it's a reasonable amount that we're asking for in the city. You know, I know BPAC likes the cities to be putting in, you know, if you put in 50%, it's like almost a done deal that you'll get a grant. So those two things, timeline and, and grant opportunities.
That's a, that's a great comment, because that's the importance of getting it to at least 30%. So when the grants show up, we have at least a 30% type drawing that has good cost estimates, good impacts and so forth. The segment near the school, a Rundle, could be part of the Safe Routes to school grants.
That's right, yeah.
There's also stormwater grants. So there, there are grant opportunities, but we just have to get it far enough along so it's competitive. Grant programs always want shovel ready and, yeah, so.
Okay. Mr. Olbert, final comments there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things that, that I'd like to see staff bring back. One is, when this comes back to us, or if it needs to be a separate item, that's fine. I, I really would like some thought spent on whether or not we are setting a precedent, if, if we approve the sidewalk constructions, setting a precedent to really have to build sidewalks elsewhere. And again, the, the example that comes to mind is Cortilaris, which is also a fairly heavily traveled road, probably as heavily traveled as Phelps, although not necessarily, not like St. Carlos Avenue. And so I just want to make sure that when the decision's in front of us, we have those implications addressed. The other thing is, harking back to what I said about things being warranted on St. Carlos Avenue, I at least would like to know when the last time, for example, we studied whether or not some of the intersections warrant more than what they have now along Britton Avenue, which is another very heavily traveled road, that every time I'm on it, it seems like there's a lot of cross traffic at the stop signs. And, you know, if Phelps is warranted with this, maybe there's something else along Britton that we need to be looking at as well. There may be other parts of the town as well, it's just Britton is the one I tend to think of. So I'd like staff to look at that and find a sense of, of what would be involved in assessing that, or maybe it was assessed recently and I just don't know about it.
Okay. All right. So move on to item 8A, new business, consideration of adopting resolutions, adopting the 2017 parking study. And number two, directing staff to implement priority parking management strategies in the downtown and south Laurel commercial areas. Thank you, Steve, by the way. I forgot to say thank you. Good job. Mr. Sivay, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'll be providing an introduction to the parking management strategies that were developed as part of the parking analysis of our downtown. And I'll be sharing this presentation with Laura Russell, who is our senior planner. And we also have Nell Seelander, our economic development manager, and Michael Onamoose, transit planner with StanTech, our consultant on the project, and they're available to answer questions. We began studying the downtown parking in 2012 to gather data and to determine what was really happening on the ground. And in the downtown core on Laurel Street, we found generally what people already knew, that high parking occupancy is a sign of a successful commercial downtown. And with this information, we're able to look at a number of options for improving downtown parking. What we know is that Laurel Street is always going to be the first to fill up, and you can always find a parking space in downtown, but you might have to walk a block or two to get to your destination. In terms of some numbers, in the downtown core, a significant share of the, of the parking is in public parking lots, whereas in the south Laurel area, we have more on-street parking. So it creates different parking scenarios. This is the downtown parking data, and in the downtown core, the street parking varies with Laurel Street being the busiest usage. And as you get farther away from Laurel Street, as you see there in the red, on the red line there, as you get farther away, the colors change, and that means that it sort of drops off. And so if you're willing to walk a block or so, then you're able to find a parking spot. But one of the things that we found is there's a fair number of private parking spaces, and those were underutilized in comparison to some of the parking lots. And this is before the Wheeler Plaza project started construction. In terms of occupancy data, what this shows is kind of what we knew back in 2012, is that during peak hours, which is about 1 o'clock when you have lunch or at dinnertime, that's when we hit our peak parking demand. And for instance, 1 to 2 PM, we're nearing 80%, we're about 78% at that time. But some of the parking, public parking areas were 85 or 90%. Once you get to about 85, the 85- Once you get to about 85, the 85 percentile, then you know that you're at a tipping point. You really should start to take some action with regard to how to manage your parking better. And we looked at South Laurel parking occupancy data, and we studied it a couple of different times. We studied it back in 2012, and then we took a look at it again in 2015. And the reason that we did that is there were changes that were occurring down in the South Laurel area. For instance, there were new restaurants coming in, we had the Salt Box come in, other restaurants were gaining in popularity. So parking was changing, and we also had a few more new residents down there along the street. What was interesting about the data, the difference in the data is that we did note a little bit of an increase between 2012 and 2015 in terms of spillover parking in the South Laurel area onto like the side streets and Walnut Street. And we had a meeting with the neighbors down there at one point, and they verified that and suggested that we look for some ways to get the employees out of the neighborhoods. One of the other surprising things that we found out in this data set is, on the bottom there, you see a blue line, and that represents El Camino Real. And that's at about 20% even during the peak hours. And I remember just looking at that data and going, what is happening here? And when we looked a little closer, we found out that El Camino was at a one-hour time for parking in that area. So if you're going to go downtown and, or to South Laurel and dine, and go to lunch, you know, walk into in front of your car, eating at the restaurant, you're going to spend more than an hour. So people weren't parking on El Camino. We recently got out in front of it and changed the parking hours to two. And so what we're hoping is that this line for El Camino goes up and the line for Walnut Street goes down the next time we study this data. We've taken a proactive approach to downtown parking, both in the historic retail core and in the South Laurel area. So as we were preparing this information, we were already starting to address some of the problems that we saw on the ground. And we've talked to council about a number of these over the last couple of years. And for instance, the idea of leasing South El Camino Real, Caltrain land, from Belmont down to just north of the Duncan Motor Site, the idea was to get the employees out of the South Laurel area and onto that site, and try and relieve some of the parking on the side streets and Walnut Street. One thing that I think has, I've noticed a difference in the downtown core is the change from permit parking at Clark Plaza, along the back fence at Clark Plaza behind B of A, and we changed that from employee permit parking to public parking. And I note that that's been a relief for some folks out there. Employees are now encouraged to park in the Samtrans parking garage, as you know, and the parking area across the El Camino, and that's more primarily for contractors. And one of the most recent issues that we've had is contractors parking along Laurel Street and in some of the customer parking spaces. And that's to be expected, but we're communicating with those folks, and we're asking them to park across the street for free all day, drop your equipment off and park over there. We are also in talks, for instance, with a local private property owner to lease some parking spaces in the downtown, and that's going well. Anywhere you go, if you go talk to the experts, there are essentially three key things that they'll tell you that you need to do to improve your parking in the downtown. And one would be to increase the efficiency of your parking spaces and your existing resources. For instance, how long has it been since you've surveyed the lot? You might have some extra spaces in there that you don't know about. Are you enforcing the standards that you have as well as you could? Also increasing supply, increasing supply, as you know, is very costly, but that's part of the puzzle. And decreasing the demand for public parking as well, getting people out of their cars, onto bikes and onto public transit. So with that, Laura will now walk you through the strategies and talk about some of the recommendations on how to get this done.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Laura Russell with the Planning Division. So we're turning now to the parking management strategies. This table summarizes the strategies, and it's also included in your staff report. The short-term strategies could be started right away and are intended to be completed in about 24 months. The long-term strategies are intended to supplement those short-term strategies, to be woven in later, depending on the impact of the short-term strategies. Those could take longer, as much as up to several years, to implement those. So I'm going to go through and provide brief summaries of the proposed strategies, but we'd be happy to provide more detail or answer questions if you would like. So first, the strategies to increase efficiency. Many of the proposed strategies rely on strong enforcement of parking time limits. And also increasing enforcement is a common way to increase parking turnover. The key components necessary to increase enforcement include additional enforcement staff, as well as new technology, most likely license plate recognition devices. The existing street line technology that we have on Laurel and San Carlos Avenue is also a useful tool for enforcement and for monitoring, and so that system should be evaluated and potentially expanded. Currently, enforcement ends at 6:00 p.m., so it doesn't line up with our secondary peak of dinnertime customers. If enforcement continued until 8:00 p.m., customers could arrive around 6:00 p.m. for dinner, have more likelihood of finding a parking spot, and be able to stay through the evening. And then, as Al mentioned, the city changed the time limit on El Camino from one hour to two hours, so we think it's wise to continue to monitor that and see if other such changes would be warranted. As you know, we've already begun to make improvements largely in anticipation of the Wheeler construction, and that includes signage. And many of those things are recommended to continue within the study. Most notably, the existing signs in downtown were updated with the start of construction. The new garage at Wheeler and any future garages will have parking technology, which shows the availability of parking spaces. And the city wayfinding study is also well underway. Again, before Wheeler construction, the employee permit parking program was altered to allow employees to park in the Samtrans parking garage and along the east side, the south part of El Camino Real. The study recommends that we monitor these changes and continue whether to continue them or alter them on an ongoing basis. The key idea here is to move employee parking out of the prime downtown and South Laurel parking spaces to open them up for customers. The first long-term strategy on the list is to encourage a shared private valet service. This type of program would maximize the number of cars that can fit within any given lot, because it would be valet and could potentially be stacked, and would also help free up parking spaces in the busiest areas. This strategy really looks to the businesses to participate with the city in a facilitation role. The temporary valet assist parking lot that's going on right now with the Foodville site is providing a lot of information to help us understand how a permanent program might work and to help the community get used to that type of program. So if the other strategies are not making a large enough impact on parking, then the study recommends that we consider zoned parking. An example of this that you might be familiar with is in downtown Palo Alto. Some places do it by numbers or colors or a distance from different parking spaces or different blocks. But the idea is that after the time limit expires, a driver cannot re-park within the same zone and has to move their car a certain distance away. And so the idea here is to increase turnover and to limit employees from moving their cars just a short distance. Through the study, we found the feedback was that there is not a strong need for loading zones at this time. However, this should be monitored over time to see how it evolves. Loading zones, of course, allow drivers to drop off seniors, kids, or people with limited mobility, and they may become more useful with ride-sharing apps like Lyft and Uber becoming more popular. So this would be an area that we would recommend that we just continue to monitor. We did talk about the fact that since Laurel has angled parking, if we were going to have more loading zones, that should probably be on the perpendicular streets where the parking is parallel, so you wouldn't have to take up a lot of parking spaces to implement So as the strategies are implemented, the city should monitor the impact on the residential areas, conduct parking counts if those are warranted, and then consider whether a residential permit parking program is necessary. If it was deemed that it was necessary, then it could follow the model that's been developed in the greater East San Carlos neighborhood. So now we'll consider the strategies to increase the supply of parking. In certain areas of downtown, developers can pay a parking-in-leave fee rather than providing onsite parking. This strategy would include a NEXUS study and a financial feasibility analysis to determine a new fee that would be more in line with the cost to actually build parking spaces, as well as some neighboring cities. So you can see the comparison in the price per space of San Carlos here at just under $18,000, and other nearby cities ranging from $25,000 up to a high in Palo Alto of $63,000 per space. You'll recall that this item was funded with the mid-cycle budget adjustments, amendments, so there is $25,000 allocated for this project if you wish staff to proceed on that. This next strategy was also funded with the mid-cycle budget adjustments. It includes the surveys of the city's existing parking lots, and then the evaluation, kind of the design or potential redesign of those, to determine whether additional parking spaces could be fit into those areas, or an analysis of bicycle parking, safety improvements, maybe lighting and landscaping, to see how overall those parking plazas could perform better As we've talked about, the data shows that there's really a lower occupancy in the private off-street lots than in the public lots or on the street. So we've got underutilized spaces that are under the control of private owners, regular property owners. So the strategy would make the most of those resources by facilitating shared parking between those property owners that have access parking and the businesses that need parking. This could also work well with the shared valet service that was mentioned earlier. Similar to Wheeler Plaza, the city has other valuable property in the downtown that could be used to optimize a private development project. So as part of this type of proposal, the city would receive a new parking garage, for example, by consolidating land with a private owner and a public-private partnership. There are also potential funding options that are outlined in the study. Those are the ones here on the bullet, such as infrastructure financing districts, parking assessment districts, and property-based business improvement districts. And next, we have the strategies to decrease the demand for parking. First, to encourage biking, the study recommends that we create an inventory of our existing bike facilities and consider adding new bike parking for customers and employees, considering that those needs are a little bit different. Whether you're a customer, you need short-term parking, usually kind of out in front, and employees need secure, long-term parking. As recommended by our commissions in particular, the city should monitor regional bike sharing programs and see if they would work here over time, and also consider capital improvements to increase safety for bicyclists. We currently have a TDM program, Transportation Demand Management, in our municipal code for larger new developments. And we'll be coming to council with a study session on TDM within the next year to discuss how we might improve the TDM program or expand it to include smaller projects and/or existing development. The study session would also include information about transportation management associations and how a TMA might work here in San Carlos. You might recall that you considered this item in the mid-cycle adjustments and asked for that study session, but it is included in the parking study, so we just wanted you to know that it was included here as well. And currently, the employee permit parking program has been focused on vehicles, which is the traditional thing for a program like that to do. But this strategy would allow downtown employees access to secure bicycle parking to diversify the program, so it would cover both vehicles and bikes. It would basically be a mechanism for employees to get access to that secure facility. So based on feedback from the City Council Subcommittee, as well as from the city commissions, staff recommends four priority strategies that would be implemented first. So those are the four that are shown here on the slides. If council adopts the parking study, the other strategies would still be implemented over time. The first two items have been budgeted, so staff could begin right away with council's direction this evening, if you wish, on the in-leave fee and the survey and redesign of the parking lots. The TDM study session would come sometime later in the year, and the expansion of street line and the evaluation of that could also happen shortly thereafter. So this evening, there are two resolutions included for the City Council's consideration. The first is adopting the parking study, and the second is directing staff to implement the four priority strategies. So staff and Michael from StanTech are here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback that you may have this evening, and I would like to thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Laura. I appreciate the presentation, and thanks to the folks on the Subcommittee for working on this for a while. This is obviously like a very big issue in town. When we, the last time we did our citizen survey, I think this was in the top three or top two issues that were of concerns. My question for you is, are you going to measure if these strategies were successful? And if so, how are you going to do that?
I can give a partial answer, and then I think we can see if Al would have anything else that he would like to add. And I think Jay is not here this evening, but we have been talking about it in a parking working group about how we would monitor some of these strategies. So the types of parking counts that we did in 2012 and 2015 have actually been very effective in helping staff to see how the different movements, parking kind of pushes and pulls. So you want to see how parking moves into different areas and how different strategies are working. So we are planning on doing some monitoring of El Camino to see how that parking time limit has changed, and I think we would use a similar strategy going forward to monitor these items. The street line data is also really helpful for us to do monitoring, so if we expand the street line data, that would be another really excellent tool to help us to monitor.
Okay. Well, I guess, I'll just make a brief comment here, which is that, you know, a lot of things in government are very qualitative. It's difficult to measure whether or not you're being successful. Some people think you are, some people you think you are. But this is one of those where like literally you're counting the number of spots and you're counting the number of cars that are moving in and out. And I just think, you know, there's a lot of good ideas, but, and obviously, we can't implement any of them. And with parking, I think everyone perceives that this is a problem that where demand is going to continue to rise, and we're going to continue to address it. And I would hope that we would put in some like goals for metrics and that we'd monitor them on a regular basis and say to the staff, you know, come up with great ideas, but really we're going to measure it on whether or not we're either increasing supply or reducing demand, not, hey, we went out and tried a bunch of things, so let's all pat ourselves on the back more, did like, did we actually solve this? Are we solving this problem? Are we making progress? And can we demonstrate that? And whether that's we look at it on a quarterly basis or, you know, twice a year, once a year, whatever it is. But, you know, some of these things seem like they would be bigger impacts than others. But I think we should all get aligned on, well, what are we trying to achieve and try to get folks, you know, to really come up with creative ideas to solve them, so.
Okay. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Laura and Al. Number of questions here. Let me start with one that I was a little bit surprised to hear about the other day. I was contacted, I presume some of my colleagues were as well, by representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, who basically, my words, not theirs, were sort of urging us to take a go-slow approach on whatever we were doing tonight. And I just was curious if that contact had been made with staff, and if so, if you had any idea why they wanted us to take a go-slow approach. any idea why they wanted us to take a go-slow approach.
Chair, no, we haven't heard directly from the chamber, and I'm not exactly sure what they meant by that, so we'd need more specifics.
Okay, yeah, okay, got it. Al, this next one actually may be for you as well. Some time ago, there was a commercial retail project south on Laurel where you and I were talking about it. There was a neighbor who complained about whether there was going to be adequate parking for it. Bottom line was, you told me that our current statutes exempt businesses below a certain size from having to either provide onsite parking or, I guess, pay a parking in lieu fee. So, and you're nodding your head, so I'm remembering it correctly. Given how critical parking has become, is there any reason why we, why shouldn't we consider making basically no, particularly no retail operation exempt? And just say, one way or another, if you're engaged in retail business in San Carlos, which presumably is going to have car traffic, you have to, you have to play a role in solving the parking problem?
So there's some trade-offs because with small spaces, let's say it's a new small space and it's 1,500 square feet is the threshold, anything under 1,500 on the ground floor for retail. And if you, the concern is whether we are encouraging activation of our downtown with a lot of retail and activity, as soon as you introduce those parking standards, it puts a lot of weight on the capability of a small business owner to fund, you know, tenant improvements or new construction. So it's a cost-benefit thing. The city got rid of parking requirements, for instance, for restaurants many years ago to encourage more activity. So that's, that's the thing, you could do that, you could change it and say, we're going to do away with that. And what that would mean is they would then need to pay an in lieu fee, most likely. They wouldn't be, a lot of times, they're very small lots, can't put it on the site. So they would end up paying a per-space in lieu fee, and it's, let's say it's one space per 300, so you can kind of calc out the cost of that.
By the way, I appreciate that explanation. We, did not the city reinstate the restaurant parking requirements? Or do we still not have them?
No, they're unaffected.
They are unaffected. I think your point's very well taken. It's just that I guess the point I would make in response is that was a different time and a different age, and if San Carlos was in that state, I would definitely say, I wouldn't bring up my idea. But, but right now, I don't think our problem is activating retail outlets, certainly on broad sections of the downtown. So I'll come back to this when the council is discussing it, but it's a small thing, but it seems to me like, why shouldn't we do that? One of the things that we never talk about, because this is San Carlos and it's, it's considered to be the third rail of council politics, is of course, paid parking. Okay? Everybody wants free parking, you know, despite the fact that there is no such thing as free parking. It's just a question, who pays for it? The question I have is, have there been studies that indicate whether or not paid parking actually does a good job of encouraging people to be more efficient in the use of parking? I know the average resident thinks, oh, cities do that because they're trying to make money. I have a funny feeling that's not a huge factor, but nonetheless, does it, is that actually a TDM, an element of a TDM strategy? And if so, does it work?
I'm not sure about the connection between TDM, but there are studies, and there's a famous book by a guy named Donald Shoup, who was a professor, I think at USC, UCLA, one of those two rival schools. But he put out a book, and he's spoken all over the country about the high cost of free parking. And so his, his premise is that there is actually a very high cost by not, by, you know, making free parking for a number of different reasons. People travel more, drive around your downtown, GHD emissions and things like that. So there's a lot of data out there, and there's some people who believe that and others who don't.
So it's, it's sort of six, one half dozen the other. You know, I'll just mention in passing that the, not that I actually want to institute paid parking in San Carlos for any particular reason, but one thing that does concern me is, we seem to have, over the last few decades, fallen into the trap, and I consider it a trap, where somehow it's the responsibility of the city to provide free parking. And clearly, parking benefits our residents so that they can get to and from the stores that we want to have in a, in a good downtown. But that can be an increasingly onerous burden, which in part is why we're talking about all this stuff, and we talk about it a lot. Are you familiar with any communities that have instituted paid parking and simultaneously adopted a program which essentially exempts residents? In other words, if you imagine a situation where we switch to having license plate readers for enforcement, and I register with the city, the license plate's on my car, and so they know that if my car's parked in a parking space and the meter flag is up, I don't get a ticket because they know I'm a San Carlos resident. Do you know of anybody who's done anything like that?
No, I don't personally. Maybe our parking consultant does.
I understand kind of how you're coming from, and the only example I can think of off the top of my head is the congestion charge in London. When it was first implemented, residents were exempt from paying the congestion charge because they're registered with their, their number plate, their license plate in the system, and those cameras could then detect it. Theoretically, a similar way could be put in, but I think that residents would then have to register with the city. You wouldn't be able to get the database from the DMV directly when you're scanning the license plates. But it's, it's obviously an option, I think, but the residents would then have to apply, I think.
Right, and we'd also have to have invested in the technology to do the license plate scanning. Last, thank you. Last observation regarding the bike parking. I've been working with staff a little bit, and there are a number of companies that are in this, this segment, but there's one that I'm familiar with called OFO, which is a Chinese venture startup. And they have an interesting take on bicycles, where instead of actually having secured storage, where you leave the bikes, then they're protected and can't be stolen, the bikes themselves actually have technology in them, so they're locked, and you unlock them with a smartphone. And they also have a GPS system in them, so if you're on Laurel Street and you want a bike, you say, okay, I'm here, and it says, oh, the nearest bike is a block away, and it's available, and you go down and you enter your stuff, and then the bike unlocks and you go where you want. I mention that just in passing because that might be something else to throw in the mix of, of things that we're thinking about. Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
Thank you. So my questions focus on, if you'll forgive the terminology, I call them hockey pucks, the little parking things that we have in. Do we, I've noticed recently, they went through and they drilled those out. I assume that's because the batteries died. So I don't think those are hardwired. Nobody seems to, who's going to take that? Grace, here she comes.
I know that recently, the maintenance crew have had the street line switch out some of those sensors that you're talking about. And I think because of sensors, they do, they do go bad, they do require replacement. I don't know if their battery or any, I don't know why, the battery or anything like that. But I know that we, we went ahead and replaced some of them.
So it was mentioned when Laura was talking about, you know, monitoring upgrades in the technology, and I just wondered if we are aware of anything that might provide that type of system, but with a more reliable hardware setup?
Yeah, they're, they're doing testing and rolling out camera technology where one camera can cover several different parking spots. It's again, license plate technology, so you could see if the cars have, you know, the system knows if the cars have come and gone. Same idea as the hockey pucks, but with a different technology.
Not sure that's the best, given what the sergeant tells us about license plates and things going on with those, but I'll pass over that. When, when we use those, is that providing us any data that we can collect on how long a car is staying, you know? Do we know this percentage of vehicles are staying for just 30 minutes and hour and a half, hour, so forth?
Yeah, that's my understanding. There's fairly detailed data like that that is available, yeah.
So it seems like, has there been any consideration then of perhaps doing some adjustments with the spaces to create more turnover, where you might have, you know, a few spaces that are, people probably hate me for coming up with this idea, but, you know, where you, similar to the zone thing, where you might have some spaces that are in the core of the downtown, but, you know, maybe they're one hour. Well, we have that already around the post office, you know, you get the 20-minute ones. But, yeah, so we mix it up a little bit more, where you might have some that are 20 minutes, you might have some that are an hour, you might have some that are two, you might even have some that are three. So could we, is that a possibility of looking at that to create more efficiency and more use that's, has more turnover?
Absolutely. And I think that's one of the things that we talked about doing in terms of looking at, you know, what's most efficient in terms of where you're parking and how many hours you should be allowed to park there. So we, so it is available, it's something that we would be looking at as part of this. And I think to kind of piggyback on that, one of the other things is, even if you have a two-hour time limit, one of the other key functions is, is enforcement. And while we do a good job, there, we might be able to do an even better job in terms of enforcement and saying, hey, we know because of this electronic data that, you know, exactly when somebody gets there and exactly when they should go, and if they don't, they're 10 minutes off, then we give them a ticket. So that's, those are things that where we can encourage people to say, hey, San Carlos, they give us free parking, but they really enforce those two-hour standards. And that gets, you get turnover that way.
To me, you know, the, just a quick comment. I prefer that kind of technology to actually putting in paid, you know, parking meters and so forth, because if you, if you stay too long, you know, it's like we're saying, we'll, we'll go with the free parking up to a point, and then, then you're going to pay for it. And to that point, then I have another question is, is there a way that we could sort of, maybe I shouldn't put it this way, but, you know, get around the idea of you're being given a ticket and the state gets part of it and the county gets part of it and we get, you know, 10 bucks, that we could just say, you know, here's these parking spaces, they're, they're, say, two-hour limit. But if you go over, fine, but you're going to pay, now, now you're going to go into a paid program, and we know who you are, and we're going to send you a bill, and it's not something that we're doing through the state. It's not really a punishment for staying too long, it's just, hey, you want to stay longer, you're going to pay. And then you could work that in even with this employee thing, where if an employee wants to park their car in front of their, you know, boss's store, or the boss wants to park in front of their store and stay there all day, fine, here's your $50 bill for every day you do that. And that would discourage people from choosing that option, and then they would decide, you know what, maybe it's better if I park in the parking garage over there at Samtrans. Is there a way that we can perhaps come up with that technology or find it or use it? Is it legal, Greg, to sort of skirt around the parking enforcement laws like that? Hate to put it that way, but it's being smart. We get all the money.
So I guess the one sort of response I would have to that suggestion is that something like that would almost certainly necessitate license plate readers, because one of the current issues with using the hockey pucks, the sensors in the parking spaces, is that a car can back out of the space and then pull back in, and we think it's a new car. And so people, drivers can circumvent the time limits by just moving one space over, pulling out for, you know, 20, 30 seconds, pulling back in. That's sort of why if, after, you know, significant enforcement and, you know, really utilizing enforcement well isn't effective in keeping those time limits, that perhaps the zoned parking is a long-term strategy where you have to move your car out of the area. So again, a lot of that requires the license plate readers in knowing which car is in which space for specifically how long.
And just a comment, to the vendor that does the hockey pucks, they should know that, that's a fault in their system. And if, you know, they're competing with the license plate readers, to me, I think their system is a better one, except for that fault. It should be able to detect, this is the same car. And if they could come up with that, that would be streaming technology. So they should know that.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I only have a couple of questions. Al, I think it was you that mentioned that you were pursuing a lease agreement for 11 to 13 private parking spaces. Are you free to tell us what, who that is with?
None at this time, but it's in the downtown core, right in the heart of downtown, in the old part of downtown.
Okay, because I had made a suggestion where I thought that might work, and I'm hopeful.
Close to that area.
Thank you. Well, that's, that's good to know. Thank you. And then the other one was on, the other question I had was on street line. It looks like more of those discs have been put in, is that right? Down the, like, the 800 block? And they look like they were, some of them were freshly installed.
There was an original installation and an expansion, but now they're in the 600, 700, 800 block of Laurel and the 1100 and 1200 block of San Carlos Avenue.
Okay, and is the 800 block just recent?
Um, no, at least several years ago.
Oh, all right.
At least three years ago.
Because it looked like, so there were just some replacement going on? Okay, all right, that's what I saw. I'm going to spare everybody with more questions, so go ahead.
Geez, thank you. Mr. Johnson, I'll get to you in a minute. I have two things. On the permit parking in South Plaza behind Bianchini's, is that eliminated there? The permit parking has been eliminated?
No, it's still there.
That's still there? That's the only one of the lots that's still there?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. And the other thing is, I, I'm old school. When we say revise hours of enforcement for downtown, you know, to me, unless you're at Fisherman's Wharf, which I got a ticket, a lovely ticket one time, because they go to seven or eight o'clock, I honestly think parking should just, I mean, enforcement should stop at six. I mean, that's, that's pretty much standard my whole life, but, I mean, I understand why we would do this, but I, I couldn't, I don't think I could support it. I just, it just, it just makes things more complicated. It's the same thing in a way, and I'm not critical of what your idea was about a 20-minute thing or an hour thing or whatever. You'd have to do it by zone or something, because otherwise you'd have a sign in every single parking lot, sign, this is an hour, this is 20 minutes, this, you know, or whatever. So, but anyway, I can't support the, not that doesn't mean, right, my colleagues aren't going to do, but I can't support adding on until, until eight o'clock to do parking. Mr. Johnson?
So I'll second that, saying that I'm not in favor of enforcing until eight o'clock. My one question for, last question was, you guys suggested four different short-term ideas for increasing efficiency, but that wasn't any of the suggested actions that we take tonight? I wondered why that is. Specifically, the bullet point on increasing enforcement seemed like something that you could just do. So is there a reason not to do that?
The increasing enforcement action implies that there'd be additional staff, as much as another full-time community service officer, as well as the physical equipment in order to buy the license plate readers. So we assume that you would want to provide some feedback on that so that staff could come back with a more detailed proposal.
Okay, so it's not that short term. And then, and then the one other thing, the last increase efficiency was assess and modify employee parking permit program. So are, do we have, my understanding was that some of the steps that we've taken for employee permit parking because of Wheeler Plaza, that our intention is to continue them beyond the point at which Wheeler Plaza opens? And so I just wanted to clarify that, and if that's the case, is there anything additional that you're suggesting that we do?
No, but that is the intent, and I'm glad you brought that up because that is part of the intent of this, and it's good to hear it, if you support it. Because I think it's, I think it's one of the critical things, and it will have an immediate impact. I think as Mayor Grisilli mentioned, there's still some permit parking in the South Plaza area. Those could be eliminated. If we have a legitimate spot for folks to go and it's, it's fair and they have free long-term parking, I think it's, it's the right thing to do. So the next step would be to, once Wheeler is completed and we don't So the next step would be to, once Wheeler is completed and we don't need, or the lease for Samtrans parking garage comes up, it would be in our interest to consider leasing that property, leasing that upper floor ourselves from, from them. So that would be the next step.
Okay, that's what I thought, and I am supportive of that. One last question. Our, our parking lot on El Camino, I didn't see mention of that, maybe I missed it, but can you just give us an update on the timeline of that?
Sure. It's funded, and our Public Works Department is, is preparing a plan for improvement of that area, and this is that area on the south, El Camino. And they've approached Caltrans, and Caltrans has made some comments to the city, and the Engineering Department is finalizing those plans, so.
So it's a 2018 thing, we think?
We recently made our first submission to Caltrans, and they had a lot of feedback back to us. So we revised it while working with Samtrans, and we've just resubmitted to them. So hopefully, if we get that permit in the next month or so, hopefully by, yeah, early 2018, we'll be able to construct that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Albert and Mr. Grokot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, since there were some comments made from folks who opposed it, opposed the idea, I actually like the idea of shifting the enforcement hours of parking, both because the data shows that, that the downtown core tends to be very heavily parked, about as heavily parked in the early evening as it is at other times of the day. And I'm also reminded of comments that I've heard from virtually every property owner, significant property owner of property in the downtown core, that as things move forward, it's more and more com, it's going to be more and more common that you're going to see service businesses and restaurants being the mainstays of the downtown core. And that means that where businesses used to close doors at five or six, and so it didn't matter, because people weren't coming there anymore, because the businesses were closed, with more and more restaurants, there's going to be, there's going to be more and more demand for parking. So whether or not, you know, there's three people in the dais who support it or not, I just want to indicate that I do.
I think logically, you're absolutely right. I agree. But I'm still likely, I'm going to support it. Mr. Grokot, what, you're right about that.
Short, a question about enforcement, increasing enforcement, and something that could be done short-term. This has to do with the, the sensors, and Laura said, we don't know when people pull out and pull back in. Wouldn't it be simple enough to do a reasonable test of pulling out and the time it would take to pull a car out completely? And even if a car was sitting there waiting, which is so often the case, causing backup, you know, three miles on Laurel Street? So a car pulls out and drives away, and another car pulls in, that takes a certain amount of time versus, and I've seen people do this, people I know, I'm like, really? That's what you did? Pull out and then immediately pull back in? Which, you know, if you time that, you can tell, and we have the data, right? So couldn't we enforce that kind of thing and say, we know you did what you did, and we're giving you a ticket?
We can talk to Streetline about, you know, you know, what the timing is in pulling out, but the, the difficulty is connecting a particular vehicle to that pull-out, right? How would that hockey puck know that it was your car? That's the connection that is difficult to make with just this particular.
Right, but what I'm saying is that it would know, because it would know it only took this amount of time to make a change, and it's impossible to have pulled out and driven away, and even if another car's on your bumper, that second car, new car, is pulling in and parking. Because to do that operation, let's say, takes 10 seconds, and so if you, you know, backed up and pulled back in, and it only took you five seconds to do that, we know that you didn't really leave, so we're giving you a ticket. And if you want to fight it, go ahead, try.
Yeah, we can explore that with the police department and the Streetline folks. Yeah, we can explore that, sure.
One more question, Al. Did I hear someone say, don't we charge the employees for permits now?
Yes, we've always charged a little bit. I think what we did for Wheeler is we are giving those out for free for this, for a certain time period.
Because I heard free just got said a couple of seconds ago. So is it going to be free in the future when we're all built out, I mean, when Wheeler?
No, no, we would go back to charging.
We'd go back to charging, but we'd still make them park at South Laurel? Okay. I'm just asking, because someone said free, and I went, oh, well, we have a new policy, I didn't know.
Yeah, the policy is during this period, until the Wheeler parking garage is constructed.
I didn't hear that part of it. All I heard was free, and I thought it was going on. Okay, well, not that I'm concerned, you know, whatever way works. Again, this is not a public hearing, but is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, so, I had one quick question. Procedurally, it says here to move to adopt the resolution of adopting the parking study. So what if we don't agree with all the management strategies in here? Are we adopting all of these management strategies, or can we cherry pick, or what's the?
I think it would be the selecting among the policies that you're in favor of, and then just making it clear in the motion that those are what's included in the, in the resolution.
So, okay, so if some of us don't like some of these, like I didn't like the hours, the reinforcement hours, so that we, we cherry pick that out, if it, and we'd have to vote, sort of vote separately on that one? Is that right?
We can have straw poll.
Oh, straw poll, okay, all right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't, don't we get a second bite at the apple on, like, something like that, it would come back as an ordinance, wouldn't it?
That's correct, but, you know, to the extent that there's not support on the council right now for the concept, why go through the process of spending the time and money to create the?
All right, so, gentlemen, what do you want to do here?
I think you should go one by one, and we should just.
All right. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Albert.
I was going to, I was actually going to make a motion. It looks like there are two elements here. I was just going to say, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting the 2017 parking study.
Check it.
Okay, so now is this where we go through and say, I don't like this one, or I do like this one?
Aren't we just adopting the study?
Yeah, I thought. I'm trying to understand, make sure we under, adopt the study?
The strategies is the, is the part I think.
All right, the second one is where, okay, all right. Well, okay, I have no problem then with adopting it. The study was very well done, and I have no problem with that personally. So, any comments on that motion? If not, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
America Sully?
Yes, all right, so move to the second part of that one, then.
And this may very well fail, but I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos directing staff to implement priority parking management strategies in the downtown and South Laurel commercial areas.
Second.
Okay, there's a second, all right, move in second. Yeah, now, so now we've, we've got a motion on the floor, and like, for myself, I think, I, I think the revised enforcement hours should be eliminated out of that one. I don't know if anybody else has.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a point of clarification?
Sure.
So I believe we're only voting on four parking management strategies? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, oh, the four, oh, let me get to the page.
Maybe you could put up that slide.
Maybe you could put up that slide, so I could help, help the chair, who's lost, obviously.
Always a good idea. Always a good idea.
Okay, these are, update the INLU fee, reconfigure the public parking plazas, promote and expand transportation TDMs, and then consider expanding, okay, so these are the only four we're voting on? The strategies?
I think a question to staff is, does, does any of the, do any of these four include revising the hours of enforcement?
Not as I read them. I can read them specifically from the REZO if you'd like, if that, if that'd be helpful.
I read it the same way you do, but.
The four high-priority strategies are update the INLU fee, conduct a nexus study, and financial feasibility analysis to update the current fee. That work would obviously come back to the City Council at a future date. Reconfigure the parking lots, survey the city-owned parking plazas, and engage an engineering firm to provide design alternatives to maximize the number of parking spaces, pedestrian safety, and long-term bike storage. Promote and expand the transportation demand management. Engage a consultant to develop an expanded TDM program to include small development projects and new and existing businesses. And number four, consider expanding Streetline parking technology, monitor improvements to parking technology, to aid in parking enforcement strategy implementation.
Okay, so if these are the only four, then I have no problem with them, these four, personally. Does anyone else have any issues with these four?
Nope.
Okay, I hear nine.
Just for clarification through the chair, Mr. Mayor, I think staff's intention was this, the language, high-priority strategies, may not have been intended to limit it, but if the council's intention is to limit it to the four, I just, I think that's, I just want to make sure that's clear what you're doing.
This is what I'm, this is, yeah, limited to these four. If there's additional things that staff want, then we're going to have to go down the line here to look at them all, which we can do. I'll wait for staff to discuss that.
I think we're clear now.
We're clear, so just these four, four that Mr., will be described? All right, is there any other discussion?
Again, I would, if there's anything we've done incorrectly in terms of how we passed this, anything that came to us, like a change on the parking hours, would come to us again.
Oh, yeah, but I just, I just want to make sure we're not
Right.
Putting the whole thing in. Okay, all right, I'll call in a question then.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
America Sully?
Yes, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Staff, everybody?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, see, that wasn't so hard. But I think before we leave this topic, since the, the extension of the, of the enforcement hours, or the shift of the enforcement hours was not one of the four things, I think in terms of giving directions to staff, we ought to indicate whether or not there's a majority support on the council for doing that.
That's fine with me. Can we do that, Mr.?
It's just a straw poll.
Yeah.
It's, this is agenda setting, so to whether or not the council wants to consider that in the future. And it would be an ordinance, by the way, to change the parking times.
All right, all right. Well, like I said, I'm, I, I don't, I think it should stay at six. Or, Mr. Albert thinks it should stay, move?
I was, I think we ought to change it.
Okay, two changes?
I think we should keep it at six, and.
Yeah, it's up to you.
I think we should have the discussion further and some look at it, but I'm not, either way, right now, so.
Okay, well, there you go.
Well, then it sounds like it gets brought back at some point.
That's fine, not, not a problem. Okay, good. All right, so moving on to item 8B, a new business consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending sections of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32, stopping, standing, and parking, creating the Civic Center Employee Parking Program. Hello, Grace.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Grace Lee, City Engineer. Due to the recent constructions, we've seen that commuters looking for long-term free parking is moving over to the downtown area, especially the underground parking garage under the library, and that's causing a lack of parking for library patrons, ACC patrons, and also city staff. There's also evidence that there's overnight parking happening in the downtown, in the underground garage. So these, I, these factors are making it necessary to have an employee parking permit program. So back in May 20, back in May, council has already adopted certain parking, parking hour changes, and those restrictions and changes includes no overnight parking in the San Carlos Library parking garage, two-hour time limit on Cherry Street from Elm to Chestnut, three-hour time limit for the San Carlos Library parking garage, and four-hour time limit on Chestnut from Cherry to San Carlos Avenue. To date, staff has only implemented the three-hour time limit in the underground parking garage. So far, we haven't done the two-hour time limit on Cherry or the four-hour time limit on Chestnut, and that's because we've heard feedback from the residents around those residential streets that they're concerned about where they can park. And so we've held off on those street part, the Cherry and the Chestnut parking hour limits, and we've only implemented the, the three-hour time limit for the underground garage under the library. For tonight's ordinance, the purpose is to introduce this language of a Civic Center Employee Parking Program into our city code. The program is only, only applies to employees of the city, of City Hall of the San Carlos Library Building and also the Adult Community Center. So employees with this permit will be allowed to park up to eight hours between nine to five, Monday through Friday. This would be effective on the downtown underground parking garage, as well as on Elm Street, there are some time, I believe it's two-hour time parking limits, so employees with that permit will be able to park there. They're not.
Whoa, okay, all right, I've got to make a note. Okay, go ahead.
But they're not allowed to park in the, I believe there's 20-minute temporary parking spots in front of the dog park area. And the permit is not valid for the surface lot on the, in front of the library. So those, those spots, we still want to encourage turnover for the library patrons. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Grace. By the way, I, I like the way you renamed Cherry Street. I think Cheery Street's actually a, would be a good name. On the slide, it said.
It's Cherry, it's Cherry Street.
No, no, but actually, I liked it. No, no, it's a nice name. I just want to double-check that by what we're doing tonight, we are not going to be reauthorizing the parking, the parking restrictions along Cherry Street and Chestnut that some of the residents had objected to. That's not part of this, doesn't seem to be the way I read it, but I was confused at one point.
That's correct. So this ordinance change is only to include language of the employee, Civic Center Employee Parking Program. It doesn't change any of the time limits that were set previously in the May meeting.
And, and while we did make those changes in the May meeting, staff has opted, based on feedback, not to enforce them?
Yeah, right now.
Or not to rule them out?
Right, right now, we're only, we're only out phase one. We want to make some observation first and then see where we go.
Great, thank you.
Well, I guess it's my turn. You're going to let employees park on Elm Street? No, I, I can't do that, there's no way. Where are all the contractors going to park? All kidding aside, people come to City Hall, they're going to, there's always some spots on, on Elm Street. Now, there's not going to be any spots on Elm Street. I mean, in my opinion.
Yeah, so I've done some personal, I've done some personal.
I'm just saying, I can't, I can't support that. I can't support that personally. I mean, that's, that word, that came out of left field, I never even heard, read about that, or heard about that one. I understood underneath, but.
I'm sorry, where does it say that? I don't, where's the Elm Street?
She just said it. She says you're going to allow, she's going to allow, it doesn't say it, that's the point, she just said it. On Elm Street, employees are going to be able to park all day.
Well, what's the proposed amendment say?
Well, the current proposed, the language of the ordinance.
I'm not jumping on you personally, Grace, but I'm just, that's, that's, I've never heard that one before. She just did, though. I thought it doesn't say the street.
Language of the ordinance says the Civic Center Employee Parking with a permit shall be limited to eight hours between the hours of nine to five, Monday to Friday, and designated locations around City Hall and the San Carlos Library. So part of that designated location around City Hall is currently.
You're making it Elm Street, and I'm going, no, I'm not voting for that. That, that, I don't think that's appropriate, personally.
May I just, may I ask, how many parking spaces are, I mean, are there on Elm Street? Roughly, I mean, I think it's.
You've got four at the, at the southern end, you've got on the, on the
I want to say about.
Western side, and then you've got 10 or 12 at least.
Yeah.
So you've got at least 14 to 16 spots.
Okay, all right, no, I understand the concern.
I mean, I, I just, to me, where would someone come if they were coming to City Hall?
I made some observations, and this is personal observation, when the permit parking started, I've, I do see a lot of turnover still in front of City Hall on Elm Street.
I see lots of turnover, and I always see parking places, even with the dog park, yeah.
Currently, we're on a pilot for the Employee Parking Permit Program.
Okay.
So currently, they have a placard that they can use.
Yeah, okay.
So I haven't been seeing that, that.
Did they know they could park, have we, did they know they could park on Elm Street?
Yeah, we've got reached the employees.
Learned a lot today, tonight.
Yeah, and I think the reason you're probably not seeing a huge difference is because parking has been so tight around the Civic Center for so long, that employees are already, and have for a long time, been parking on Elm Street, they're just moving their cars around.
Okay, well, it could well be, but.
And so.
During, during certain hours, like from nine to 12, when the contractors come, it's really busy there, I've been there a number of times, but in the afternoons, there's not, except for people at the dog park, there are not a lot of folks there anyway, and then I'll throw the dog park in, where are they gonna park?
So, the, the 20-minute spots in front of the dog park?
Yeah.
The employees with permit are not allowed to park there.
There's four spots there, okay, I, you know, I know, okay, well, I, I, I'm sorry, I just can't support it, no, that's cool, go ahead. Other comments, Mr. Collins?
Thanks, Bob. How many spaces are in the library garage right now?
It's about, I don't have the exact number, but it's around 100.
Around 100, and how many total employees do we have?
More than that, because it's not, not only the City Hall employee, but also the library building tenant employee.
And I would assume police officers, too.
Right.
They take at least 15, or I shouldn't, I shouldn't guess, they take a number of spots.
They park their personal cars.
Well, as well as the police cars, a couple sometimes.
Police cars are underneath.
Not all of them, not all of them.
Not all of them?
No, at least, not my observation, there's other, other, there's, there's official cars parked, there's official city cars parked there, underneath, as well as employee cars.
So, so how many, how many are we talking about? How many extra employees would need, do you think would need to have a permit to park on Elm Street? Are we talking three, 10, 20? I mean, I wanna, I'm trying to get a feeling, how big a problem is this?
There's no way, really, to answer that question, because it depends on how many people are parked in the garage, for example, so if there's a lot of residents parked in the underground garage for a library event, or City Hall event, or something, there are gonna be fewer parking spots available to employees. So, you know, this doesn't, this isn't a designated parking spot program, this just means that employees of the city or tenants, employees of the tenants of the library could park anywhere in the houred parking area for longer periods than what's signed.
Right, I, I understand that, I guess, where I'm going with this is that, until now, there, you could park all day in the library, right? And because commuters and other residents and other people were parking in the library, our employees couldn't park there. So, with the implementation of, what, three-hour parking limit under the library, do you think then that frees up enough space? Because not every employee is in library, City Hall, ACC every day. So, I'm wondering if by removing that problem of the transient parkers, do we then solve the problem for the city employees by allowing them to have permits to park under the library? I mean, what I'm hearing is maybe not.
Well, I mean, you're certainly helping, absolutely.
Yeah.
Solving, no, not entirely, and again, all that's happening right now is employees, if you can't find a space under the library, you're parking right now already on the street in an hour, two-hour parking area, and then you're just running out to move your, employees are just going out and moving their cars around City Hall.
Which is employees and businesses are also doing, yeah.
You know, so, you're not increasing the number of employees who are parking on the street by doing this, you're simply allowing them to park there as employees of the Civic Center without having to go out and move their cars four times a day.
Mr. Grokot?
In studying this, were the spaces under City Hall included in any kind of study?
Are you asking if the, if the spaces under City Hall was included in the downtown parking study, or in, in any other study?
Well, whatever study led to this solution.
So, I believe the police department, or the sheriff's office collected data for us, for the underground parking garage, and they've noticed that there are a lot of commuters parking there, and they've noticed that.
In the library, or in their?
Underground, oh, no, in the library, underground parking garage.
Right here, underneath City Hall, there's some designated spots for, for instance, you know, city manager, assistant city, assistant to the city manager, there's a spot for a council member, and, and then the rest of them are taken up by sheriff's vehicles, be they motorcycles, or patrol cars, or SUVs. Was any of that, was there a look taken at the use and efficiency of the use of those spaces?
So, we've looked at the need for them, and there's still need for them, they're mostly occupied, like, for, for city vehicles, we still need a place to park the city vehicles, and for the sheriff's office, they need a, a spot to park their vehicles as well. So, those designated spots are need, are still needed to be designated spots, and not open for other employees or other free parking.
And that would include, I think someone mentioned, you know, there's a few spots in, now, under the library, so I've moved my question a little bit. Under the library, there's, I think, a battalion chief space and some other spaces that are for specific vehicles, not employees per se, in general, but specifically for public safety vehicles and so forth, so also those?
Yeah, so those, those spots remains the same as labeled for those.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Johnson?
Didn't Jeff said you wanted to add one?
Well, I was just gonna, you know, the council seems to be struggling with this a little bit, and I feel perhaps a reminder, this all came to the city council just a couple months ago, and was approved by the city council, and so you're catching us a little bit flat-footed here, and that we don't have that presentation here tonight, this was just a follow-up implementation ordinance item that needed to be.
I apologize, I said nowhere, and I'll go back, I don't know, maybe I can find the paperwork, but I don't ever remember anybody telling me that the employees could park on Elm Street, seriously, honest, I wouldn't have, I apologize, if I would, I would have talked to you about it earlier today, if I knew anything about this, I would never have tried to sharpshoot this or anything, honestly, and I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but I do not.
I, I don't either. So, I mean, I think the concern is that, you know, a lot of people need to do business at City Hall, and we want to have spots available for them. If we said, you know, you can park for eight hours, not on Elm Street, would staff have a concern about that as a starting point?
I think that would be a fine starting point.
I would at least voice my support for that, and maybe, maybe.
I'm supportive of all the rest of it, I just, that one just scares me to death.
I think it's a good point.
I don't know, and Mr. Collins?
Thanks, Bob. One other question I had, Grace, is what about allowing employees or working out a deal with Samtrans to allow employees, you know, the overflow, to park at the Samtrans building? All day? I mean, they've got, are, are they at capacity with all the public parking?
Yeah, I don't think right now with Wheeler that we're gonna be able to work out that arrangement, as we've already kind of maxed that out over there, and, you know, one of the things that we're trying to encourage by removing commuters from our lot is that they would actually then use that lot over there, so I think we're gonna have to see how this shakes out a little bit, but, you know, again, if the council's more comfortable in not having the permit parking apply to Elm Street, you know, I think that'll be fine, and we'll just see how things work out, and if we feel like we need to come back to you a year from now and, and talk about Elm specifically, we'll do that, but I, I think it'd be a good place to start, and certainly, we can have those conversations, councilmember down the road.
Mr. Grokot, last shot here?
So, the street right behind us, behind the library, is Chestnut? Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what's.
Mr. Johnson? Clarifying question on Ron's question, which I thought was a good one, which is, today, if you work for downtown business and you get a parking permit that your business buys, you can go park in the Samtrans garage all day long. So, why can't we issue the same parking permits that we're issuing to downtown businesses to our own employees, and have that be a solution so they can park in the Samtrans garage?
Like I said, I don't think that there, I don't think there's any problem with looking at doing that, but when we looked at the capacity of the garage and how many spots we were trying to transfer permit-wise from the existing parking lots downtown, we were, in addition to making up for spots just for normal business.
We sold out, basically.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the idea, is that, you know, I'd be concerned that we'd be moving our employees over there and, and then taking up spaces that would be available to residents wanting to go downtown.
So, I'll, is there any, again, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on any of this item? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to introduce ordinance number?
1523.
1523, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending sections of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32, stopping, standing, and parking, creating the Civic Center Employee Parking Program, with the caveat that city employees are not allowed to park all day along Elm Street.
All right, is there a second?
Is that clear, is that acceptable, Greg?
I just have a suggestion, because sub-paragraph C says the permits are not valid, valid in the San Carlos Library surface lot, I'd suggest that we add that the permits are not valid on Elm Street to that portion when you're introducing the ordinance.
I accept your friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, moved and seconded for discussion. Hearing any roll call, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not, I guess it's a discussion I'm in, but it wouldn't affect this, is I, I don't accept what the sheriff's department is telling us about the use of the parking spaces under this building, and when I go through there and I see all these vehicles sitting there, almost, it appears almost in cold storage, I know that there's some turnover, but I just don't believe that we're getting the efficiency out of the parking spaces underneath this building that we need to when it comes to our own employees, keeping in mind that the sheriff's department, that's a contract, and that contract should perhaps specify what real estate they are allowed and what real estate they're not allowed, and we might push into that a little bit and see if we can't come up with some other, some additional spaces for some of our employees, our own employees.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Thank you, yes. Okay, we'll go back to L, 6L. Mr. Obert, you were the one who wanted to pull that?
Yes, I was. The question I have for staff, I've had some discussions with, with Jeff earlier, is the money that's being requested, how much of it is coming out of grant funding, and how much of it is coming out of general funds?
So, this particular item, no money's being requested tonight, but what's already been budgeted for this item is a million dollars, that's general fund money, it's coming out of Fund 25, so, you know, it can be tasked to, to anything. This particular item is expanding the existing contract to cover several things, about $680,000. It will be related to completing the design of the project, the remaining money would be related to various construction management and associated contingencies if and when the council authorizes construction down the line of this project. Does that answer?
That answers that question. Second question is, what's the latest update on our ability to secure additional funding for this project? As I recall, doing this off the top of my head, when Jay last presented it to us, the shortfall was something on the order of like 10 or 11 million dollars, meaning that it was, there would be 10 or 11 million dollars that would have to come out of our own capital funds to, to, if this project were to go through to completion.
So, based on the mid-cycle budget, the shortfall's about 10 million dollars. During that mid-cycle budget, 3 million from the PGA settlement agreement got, got budgeted to this project, and another 3 million, we're hoping that because of the gas tax increase, the, 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 the grant from that gas tax increase will still have a second chance at getting, because they're doing a mid-cycle for that, and we won't know that till later this year, we're getting that 3 million for the pedestrian overcrossing, so that's 3 million. And we are also exploring with the TA to go over the cost increase for the interchange portion of the project, to see if they'd be willing to, to increase their grant funding for the interchange portion of the project.
And Grace, just, my understanding, although I don't know this for certain, is that it's gonna be, additional funding is gonna be agendaized at the September meeting for the TA, was my last conversation with staff, I don't know if you have any new information.
I didn't get a confirmation on that from staff, it was either September or October they were shooting for, we've been working with the TA staff to feed them information on, on this.
Thank you, Grace, and thank you, Jeff. The reason I asked this, I didn't want to be polled, and I, I didn't expect there to be definition on getting additional funding quite yet, because the things are still in process. I hope we're successful in doing that, but as I indicated when Jay had done his presentation, I personally have no interest in risking spending 10 million dollars of scarcity money on something that even Caltrans doesn't think is that important of a project. And so, and, you know, if I knew that we weren't gonna be having to potentially tap into our general fund revenues, general fund capital revenues, I'd be happy to support this, but I don't want to spend the money and commit to spending the money until we have resolution of those other issues.
Okay, all right, any other comments, otherwise I'll call the question. Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove, or do something on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 6L.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, moved and seconded for discussion.
I, I just want to comment that I'm gonna vote against it for the same reasons Mr. Obert is.
Okay, that's fine, any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right. We now have council communications and announcements, Mr. Johnson.
I just, it looks like Amy has left, but I got a lot of positive feedback about the first annual campout in Burton Park from a lot of parents, who said that the staff did an exceptional job of putting it together, so I'm, I'm really happy we did that event, and I hope we do it again.
Do we have any campers we had, or?
I, I don't, do you know? I mean, I think we sold out, right? 300 or something.
300 people?
Yeah.
Whoa, cool.
So, yeah, great job, staff.
Mr. Grokot?
Just one item, and, well, I'll just throw it out there, I'm hearing some complaints from folks, and I would include myself in this, where we have properties that are either set up for development, in other words, someone's bought them and they're planning on developing them, and then the, the site sits dormant, and there's issues with trash, with weeds, and, and just a general disorderliness to the site, and then also jobs, sites, properties that are under construction, and maybe they've gone dormant for some reason or another, and there's been no construction activity, and the same problem where they begin to look unsightly and, and unsafe, they could be, from what I read in the paper today, even a problem with rat infestation. But we've got, we've got this going on, and I'm not sure what we have in terms of handles that we can pull for enforcement on some of these, and so, I would ask the council to consider that we put something on the, on the dais for discussion, or staff puts together something for us to look at, to see if we have the handles we need to enforce these kind of issues, so I'd throw that out there.
I would agree with you, I think, I don't know what, if it needs to be official or unofficial, but I have, I've noticed some of the same things.
Just code enforcement issues?
It could be, but I don't know.
Yeah, and it could be a, a lack of enforcement, or it could be a lack of ways, you know, means that we have to enforce it, and so, what I'm asking is to have something brought to us where we look at that issue.
There's a way we can pressure the permits or something.
I have had discussions over the years on properties that were vacant or not under construction, my recollection from what Greg and other staff members have told me is that because you're talking about private property, there are actually a very, relatively limited number of things that we can do, but by all means. of things that we can do, but by all means, let's have a discussion and see what we can do.
Especially the ones under construction, there possibly might be a way for the permit to go, you're not utilizing your permit possibly, so, whatever, yeah.
It's gonna depend on the conditions on each site to site. It's gonna depend on the conditions whether we have-
But I think there's so many sites in the whole city that are going on, and some, I think, you know, I don't know what percentage, but there's some that are just sort of sitting there, so, anyway. Okay, good. Mr. Olbert?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we had a Caltrain, a combination Caltrain-High-Speed Rail meeting last Thursday. There was no meeting in July after the groundbreaking. A couple of representatives were there from High-Speed Rail, and a Caltrain representative who was talking about Caltrain's business plan, which is something we haven't seen bef- we really haven't seen before, have had a present- presented to us, but the interesting thing about it was that there was no mention in there about grade separations, which we've been hammering on as a task force for a couple of years now. And the reason that it actually applies to us is that even though we and San Mateo, or excuse me, Belmont have, you know, we've already done our grade separation, by having the cost of the grade separations in the business plan and knowing what the cost is, we can encourage High-Speed Rail and Caltrain to think about building, when they start building these grade separations, they can build them to accommodate the four tracks that they say they need in other places, and if they build them in other places, they don't need to impact our grade separations. So this is something that we'll just continue to hammer on, saying that's it.
All right. The only thing I have is I went to Ireland for two weeks, and in the city of Cork and the city of Dublin, they have a thing every year, they have a Lord Mayor. And I thought that was a really nice title.
Lord Mayor.
Lord Mayor.
Don't get any ideas.
Yeah, but you have to wear a wig and a robe.
Better than Irish.
I know, but I could adopt it, but, anyway. Anyway, anything else? Jeff?
Nothing from- from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
If there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn this meeting tonight. Thank you.